Did you see my feet? Okay, good. Because I was watching a replay of something from last week. No, I don't touch the ground so my shoes kept falling off. And I had kept having to adjust and put my shoes back on. So I was like, I really don't think that the public needs to watch me.
Chair?
There you go.
You're getting good at this.
I know I am, thank you. Okay, it's February 4th. We will call the North Kingstown School Committee Budget Workshop Session to Order. As stated in policy, a working session meeting may be convened by the committee when necessary to hold discussions and allow for public input on any issue put before the committee. The first item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is applied to the United States of America in two republics which stands one nation under God indivisible liberate and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Erin Earl.
Here.
Robert King.
Here.
Jennifer Lima here. Megan Riley.
Here.
Sherri Kennedy.
Here.
Joshua Bridato.
Here.
Joshua Booker.
Okay, thank you. We do have the working session guidelines here. I will not read them, but they are there for reference. Citizens comments, do we have anyone signed up for citizens comments? Hurry it's ready. Thank you. Okay, and so we'll move on to presentations. The first one is Discussion of Capital, Dr. Efe.
Yes. So we have a presentation which I'll go over, to go over the CIP Capital Improvement Plan for the district for next year. This is a similar plan that was presented to Asset Management, goes over the projects that we have planned for next fiscal year using bond funds. As you can see, oh, okay, my computer, not that one. There we go. As you can see on this first slide, we are estimating total costs.
What was outside on the table was dated 1/28. Is there one that was supposed to be out there dated 8/28? I noticed your slide had 8/28. I apologize. No, my budget presentation, is it the same as last week?
Nope, there's one.
If you open it, it has capital improvement on it. If not, we can get copies made. It's the one one that's up there.
I apologize, I just want my notes.
And you know, I have one right here, an extra one right here that you can have.
Oh, okay, thank you very much.
Oh, we should be.
Well, we can make more copies. That's the best one.
Do you need another one? Are you sure you don't need?
Nope, it's okay. No, I can. Please, you can have that one.
They should have been, they were made, they should have been.
Yeah, yeah, but this is what was out there.
It's okay. Here, take these two and then, because I don't write on it while we're talking anyways, and then I can get another one later.
No worries. Sorry about that.
Oh, you know what?
Are they out there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Karen, did I take, oh, we'll take. I want to make sure I just gave her the right one. I just took it all this year, but. Does it say 2/4 on it? Okay.
Anybody need?
We're fine. Oh, okay, okay.
So the first, the first slide is just a summary overview of the projects that we have planned for fiscal year FY '26. The estimated cost of these projects is $13,272,200. The project breakdowns are in categories of roof. There's only one roof for the next school year, that's the North Kingstown High School roof, estimated at $8,441,400. Then we have fire safety upgrades for $237,700. ADA upgrades across the district of $396,700. Security vestibles for the district of $345,700. Interior renovations, which is mostly. One of the slides is, I'll get, I'll get to the slide and go through the details because there's a lot, there's certain things in there. That's for $3,163,800. Window gaskets for $89,500. Then plumbing, the $597,400.
Can I have a question?
Yes.
Do I reach to the end or just? This is different from what was presented to us the last time you gave us the CIP thing just a couple of weeks ago. There were two things that were missing, were they deliberately pulled out?
Which two things were missing?
They are the. Interior renovation and plumbing at Fish and Cove and HVAC and electrical work at Stony Lane, two items there. It equals, mm, two and a half million dollars. Does the presentation from, I'm trying to just. From January 8th included those, and it's not in here.
What were they again? Just so I can compare it.
The interior renovation, plumbing, Fish and Cove A29, and HVAC and electrical, Stony Lane M2J and B.
So, I'll go back and look, because from then, we, this is what we presented for Asset Management, which was the same.
And that's what I'm comparing it to.
Right.
It's okay, we'll, we'll check.
I'll go back and look and see if I missed something coming off the slides, but. Let me, let me go through this and I can go back and look at that for you.
And this is a workshop, we're working together.
Yeah, I'm just.
Well, that's what I just, I didn't know if it was left off or whether it was a deliberate decision not to proceed with that.
Nope.
Unclicked, and that's okay.
Well, I want to go back and compare, so.
Yep.
Don't want to make a decision on the spot, so.
So why don't we just keep going, then we'll make a note back.
So we have the high school roof, and so we have the infrared survey, along with removing the roof system and constructing a built-up roof system. We have the fire alarm replacement for Forest Park.
Ken, do you want us to ask questions slide by slide, or do you want us to wait?
You can, or, yeah, I mean, if you have a question on, most of this is, a lot of what we've been presenting, so, but yeah, if there's a question on.
We've never seen this, these like this, though. You might have presented it to Asset Management like this, but we didn't see it like this, right?
It was in the file that we got in January, yeah.
Yeah, but not this presentation.
Yeah, it's just, I think, it just, I mean, everything here came out of the spreadsheet, but.
Yeah, you can go.
The next set, so now this gets into the ADA improvements. There we go. So for DMS, ADA, ADA requirements is install sidewalk curb ramps, provide adequate modifications to the sidewalk, and then there's no external level landing on the north side of the building, so provide ADA access there. For Fish and Cove, remove and replace the walkway leading to the playground. At Hamilton, it's to install ADA accessible Route 2 and within the outdoor classroom that's in the backfield. And then the exterior door from the library does not need ADA accessibility, so that needs to be updated. At Quineset, ADA accessibility at the main entrance, replacing temporary metal ramp, providing ADA access to the playground, the outdoor classroom. The doorway on the western side of the school has to be ADA accessible, and so it's doing that along with sidewalk work. At Stony Lane, again, ADA accessibility to the outdoor classroom. And those are all the, the projects to bring us up to ADA. These are the security vestibles, so the installing security interlock vestibles at Fish and Cove, at Quineset, at Stony Lane. At Hamilton, we're going to transform the existing main entry lobby to include a security interlock. It's a little bit different there, because when you walk into Hamilton, you also have access to the gymnasium. Going to remove and replace failing window gaskets at Forest Park. This is work for Quineset and for Stony Lane, which is the HVAC upgrades. So sound and conditioning systems, remove and replace exhaust fans, existing cabinet heaters. We are doing the building management system at Quineset, which is part of the bond, because there's a partial BMS system there, so this is just finishing it off. We did remove the BMS out of the other schools for now, and that would be using funds if we had additional surplus money. Stony Lane, similar project minus the BMS for updating the HVAC there. This gets into plumbing, remove existing water coolers and replace them with water fill, bottle filling stations at DMS. Davis-Law Academy, similar, replace existing water coolers and replace them with the water bottle filling stations, remove and replace gas, fire, and water heaters, and the pink water heater in the boiler room. At Fish and Cove, replacing existing plumbing for bathrooms and provide ADA compliant plumbing fixtures. And at Forest Park, removing existing plumbing fixtures and bathrooms as well. Similar project at Hamilton, for replacing plumbing fixtures for classrooms, giving bathroom spaces, provide ADA plumbing fixtures. At the high school, to remove existing water coolers and replace with high, with high-low bottle filling water coolers. Remove the existing railing at the auditorium balcony, install a guardrail for appropriate height, and install ambulatory access stall in the restrooms. Quineset, removing the existing water coolers, replacing with bottle filling stations. And Stony Lane, similar project, removing existing water coolers and replacing the bottle filling stations. That's the capital.
And just to clarify, every single thing on that list is currently funding source bonded?
It's all bonded, correct.
So are we, but are we getting a presentation? We have a certain fund too, for capital, correct?
We do have capital. We want to have that conversation regarding the, the fund balance, you know, we have.
That's what I thought, ooh, goodness gracious.
And reappropriating the fund balance, looking at that. So we did not put that as part of tonight. We are going to go through the fund balance, but we want to also have a conversation about what is in the fund balance and what we recommend as far as assigning areas of the fund balance.
Yeah, I mean, that's, sorry, maybe I should have been more clear. That's what I thought we were going to talk about with discussion of capital, because like, we know that, right? Like, we know what's coming out of the bond, but also we know we have a lot of other things to do, and we might have some, some, some money to do that with. And so it's okay if it's not ready tonight, but this is.
Yeah, we can have that for you next week.
And I think part of, part of what I was going to, as we're going through the fund balance there, so we have Chris Murphy here and we have Chaz, there are different projects that were requested during the budget process that were capital projects that we didn't have the funds for to put in the budget, so they are here and we can talk to those now that we have the fund balance and we can kind of see what it is. So we, that is kind of part of what the discussion would be. But I know Chris's, is still a working document that he's working on in terms of what he thinks, but we have about, what do we have, $300,000 to $500,000 of like known things for fiscal '26 that we had talked about, that we had wanted to include in here.
There's $350,000 worth of high priority items, things that need attention now.
And then traditionally during the budget process, and correct me if this is not right, in addition to the operating requests that we put forward to the town, we also could put forward a capital one. Like, I know the bond is catching us up and doing a lot of things, but if there was a certain project that wasn't in the bond, like traditionally we have put that forward too, in addition to.
And we brought that to them at Asset Management. We brought that and they put that as part of the consideration of where they rate what would be priority versus not priority, and those items were in their list because they were not bonded, and that's what we want to also, so.
Yeah.
So that is, right? So like, a lot of what we, what Chris is mentioning, we presented to Asset Management as well, and they consider, they're considering that as part of their priorities of what would be funded outside of the bond. That was all part of the, that was listed when we shared it with you before going to Asset Management, their private suite.
And, and yes, we can go to the town to ask them for a separate funding source, but when we have a fund balance, like we currently do, typically that's where they're going to divert and say, if I use your fund balance first before we can make a separate request, but, yeah, the short answer is yes.
Yeah, so I just think as part of the total conversation about money, of course, that statement is true, but also, like, just considering if, if there's other needs and other requests that we, we need to make, so we'll get that next week. Bye. Anything else on capital from the committee or administration?
Do you want me to, Chris, I don't know if you're comfortable with coming up, but do you want to talk about what those items are before we do fund balance? Like, what his, his, the items were that he had originally requested that we pulled out of the budget for those capital projects? Do you want to talk about that now? I don't, I just don't have a slide. I just, that's really, I just don't have a slide for it.
Do we have number? Like, only, I mean, we don't have to unless we have numbers, I guess.
Yeah, no, I think, and I would rather go through the fund balance before hearing things.
Okay. And that was my, that was our thought, so.
And then come back next week, once you know, here's what's in the fund balance, and then we're going to come back next week saying, here's what we're recommending to assign for the capital.
Yeah, I think I was expecting the fund balance tonight, so maybe just a confusion on like what capital we were talking about.
Okay. No worries. Okay. Any other questions from the committee?
No.
Okay. Do you want to move on to enterprise?
Sure. So again, I don't have slides for the enterprise accounts, because we have Trish here, and you all have the electronic version of the budget, and then you have a paper copy, but for the main enterprise account that we'll discuss is the only enterprise account that has a true budget. So the other enterprise accounts, we monitor, we do beginning and fund balance, which you have that document there, so you can see what the fiscal '24 end balances are, and what we rolled into, what we're starting with, and then I have given you a year-to-date, and we can go through them one by one. But they don't have an actual budget that we put forward, so the nutrition we service is really the only full budget, so that, so Trish, I don't know if you want to just come up, so that you're just available for any questions, but.
Or Trish can sit at the table, too. Oh, yeah. You don't have to stand at the table. Please stand. Well, if you're presenting, I think it makes sense to stand at the podium. I mean, you can come sit at the podium if you have questions. Hi, Trish.
So for those that are new to the committee, just a quick update. So when I first came on board, I looked at the existing '25 budget, and I had made some adjustments and some recommendations to the school committee, not of increasing or decreasing it at all, but starting to slowly move some of the budget numbers around so that it actually aligned with where the money is coming in and out of. So what had been done in the past, everything kind of got rolled into these two buckets. So throughout this year, we're slowly working to, like, so we adjusted the budget so that the budget lines were where they needed to be, and we're working on, as we're now putting the information in the system, getting it into the right places. So when you're looking at this budget in front of you, the numbers for fiscal '26 may look very strange, may look a little different, and that's because this is going to be the first budget where we've now aligned where the money is coming in and out of. So, and, and we've sat and we've gone through this with a fine tooth comb to make sure that everything is very, so, so don't be alarmed if you see some strange disparities from '25 to '26. So one of the important things to know is that although this enterprise fund functions very well, and we have very little issues with it, we did finish the year with a net loss of $56,000. So we had rising food costs, we had other things that definitely put us over what our initial budget was. That being said, the account itself has $1.9 million in it. So when we operate at that loss, there is plenty of money within the fund balance to cover that and to continue moving forward.
Sorry, what was the loss again?
I believe it was 56, 56,000. So if you look at this document, when you're looking at '24 actuals, it looks like it's 136,782, and that's because there was supply chain assistance information that we received that is allocated differently through budgetary and the audit, so it's not recorded here. So there's additional revenue that would go against that 136, so the final bottom line was that 56,000. So every year, when you, when you, even though we have plenty of money in the account, we have to allocate a certain amount of that to be spent, because RIDE only allows you to carry a certain amount of money. So what you'll notice within this budget is there are certain line items that we've allocated to strategic spending, and that is because we have to draw down on that account. We, we have to, we can't have more than three times.
Three months' worth.
Three months' worth of.
$375,000 maybe, so we have 1.5 million to allocate and have a strategic spending plan with it.
And this is all, this presented to RIDE too, so they approve what it is, and so every year, what the district has been trying to do is to make purchases that need to be made, or to have, like I said, built into a different strategic spending. The last two years, there was a lot that has been purchased, so now we're kind of at a place where there isn't a tremendous amount that we need to buy right now, but we are certainly looking at ways to spend down some of that money. So that would not affect the operating budget at all. This would be above and beyond anything that we would need to function on a day-to-day. So because we operated at a loss, we sat and we looked really closely at what our operating expenses were and what we really thought truly our revenue was going to be going into the next year. And so you'll notice that we did decrease our revenues slightly from what we had, or what was budgeted in '25. We also think that when the budget was done in '25, they were taking into account things like that supply chain assistance, when they were looking at revenue that we will not have this year, so we did adjust down for things like that.
Wait, when you're saying they, who are you talking about?
The people who did the budget last year.
Us, so.
Yes.
Yeah, so the three of us over here.
Yeah, so there, there were, when you look at what the revenue was going to be, it was, it looked inflated.
Got it.
Because there's supply chain money that was coming in, it was money that came from various COVID sources, that I think different districts got at different points, but it was all told probably like $84,000. That's not true revenue that you can expect year-over-year. So that is adjusted out for fiscal year '26.
I will, not today, but at some point defer to the historian on that. Like, I feel like, I don't.
That didn't come up in conversation during the budget at all, yeah.
The supply chain?
No, the $84,000 was not in the revenue, is what I'm saying. I don't remember that at all.
No, it wasn't.
Okay.
So we can work through that, it's okay.
We, we certainly can, but I mean, I can show it's audited, we have all of that, so I can give you all the backup for it. But that was, that was my, in, in reviewing year-over-year, that was my assertion as to how some of these numbers were arrived at, just looking at what it had been in previous, previous years and what the difference was. But I do still think, if we look year-over-year, our federal reimbursements are going down, and I do think that we need to consider that. Basically, Trish and I have a projection for what our reimbursements are going to be for '25, and it's about 660, 661,000. So with that, we thought that the 650 accounts for, again, any adjustments with supply chain and if we have increased reductions.
Is that because less student, what, why do you think that is?
Well, it's a matter of, in some cases, a lot of students don't necessarily buy a reimbursable meal. They might bring the, they may bring their fruit, their snack, and then they're just grabbing a component of a lunch, especially in our secondary schools. So if somebody were to come in and just grab a bottle of water and an apple, there's no reimbursement tied into that. It's considered an à la carte sale. And about 50% of the secondary kids are just bringing something but buying something. So that ties into the reimbursement. You may have a sale, but you're not going to have a reimbursement, because it's not a complete meal.
I would assume that that's the same, though, like, middle school kids be middle school kids pretty consistently, so I don't understand how that could equal the change.
Well, at secondary level, and if you're an elementary student, you're either buying a lunch with all the five components or you're not.
Yeah.
So now I'm a, now I'm a sixth grader and I start.
Oh, no, I, yeah, I understand that part. What I was saying is though, like, I can't imagine the behavior has changed, so I don't understand how.
The purchasing behavior changes, because they now have access to buying other items other than the reimbursable lunch.
All right, let me try to say it a different way, sorry, because I don't think you're understanding me. From the students in 2024 to the students in 2025, I imagine that they are doing the same thing, right? That they're grabbing. The pattern stays the same. Middle school is only buy the water, middle school is only buy the apple, so I just don't understand how that could change that much. Does that make sense? Like, I totally understand what you're saying, Trish, and I totally get how fifth graders are doing than sixth graders.
Yes, I see what you're saying.
But I don't understand how the, that could impact the federal reimbursement at that drastic of a number, if that, as we're, and I don't need an answer on that, that's just.
It could be just based on a number of like free and reduced lunches that we have. It could be just based on a number of like free and reduced lunches that we have.
That's what I'm curious about, if people aren't filling out stuff or.
But also the year to date, like you have the budget, maybe that's why, because the budget's seven twenty five and the year to date, you're not even halfway there yet. Is that what you were thinking? That's why I think you put it to six fifty, because you're, we're probably not going to hit the seven twenty five.
I I can't imagine that we're going to hit the seven.
Yeah, so I think that's where.
We're looking closer to six sixty.
Reducing it because we're not going to hit the seven twenty five this year, so we're going to make it more what we think it's going to be.
And during COVID, and I believe the year after, too, there was an additional reimbursement being tacked on, tacked on, which was like fifty cents a meal.
All right, so that contributed to.
But was that in twenty twenty four?
I'd have to look because as Leslie said, we're really just getting on the line by line budget now. So when I look back at these numbers, they're a little.
It's okay.
We can certainly check to see about the forms, though, because that is something that districts have noticed that, like, post COVID, it's very hard to get because there we have.
Well, the forms also changed, like how the uniform has changed, it has become more technical, like it's, there's a, there's some new barriers, even though the form's better, you know, so it's okay.
And there was a whole thing with recertification, direct certification, so it could be that our numbers there have changed, which is offsetting it. So we can certainly look into that.
Thank you.
And what do they have to buy in middle school to count it as a full meal?
And the majority of the the students who do buy do get the full meal, but it would be protein, fruit, vegetable, grain, and milk.
And they go up and order the full meal, right?
Yes, but they don't have to take all five components. They can take three out of the five. You can take five, but if you take three, you're also, we're also able to claim reimbursement, and that has to do with just food waste. Where they have, it's called offer versus serve, whereas in the elementary school, we're giving them every component. In the middle school, if you're not going to eat the carrots, then they don't have to take the carrots because the carrots just get thrown away.
Yeah. Just before you move from the revenue, so I know you said you were reallocating like by line, is that why there's a big difference between like things shifting from lunches to canteen?
Yes. So what, what we were finding, and this was even shifting even more from when I presented it in June, as as I'm looking where things are getting allocated as as it comes in, where it's getting booked, all of these things were kind of getting rolled into just student lunch payments. And so as we've been watching it and really breaking out, and we have a really great system of documenting what comes in, majority of that, that canteen snack bar, that's those à la carte sales, that, that is closer to the amount that's actually coming in. But in prior years, it's just listed up in that, in that lunch.
We don't get reimbursement on.
Correct. That's, that's just income that we have that's coming in, correct.
So it's possible that last year, the breakout was the same. And then my other question was just on a couple of these revenues, like Sherri just said, like the year to dates are way off from where we would be. Have they just not been booked or are we not projecting that we're going to hit them?
So some of them, again, so if you're looking at year to dates, where, that's the part that we were talking of cleaning up. So like the breakfast, it's all getting rolled up right now. So that like three twenty four, five nineteen number is, that's where everything is sitting. But if you go through and you look at the actual RIDE pay of where it comes in, it actually, some of that is breakfast, some of that is lunches, some of that is adult. So we're working through right now, breaking that out and allocating it to the correct place. So I can certainly, once we have that done, provide that so that you can see where that is.
Because the vending was the one that like stood out to me. Did we?
So the vending, and I have a document that has my notes on the site. I will provide that to all of you. Um, and actually, if you, you might have it if you're looking at, if you unhide H and I, you can see my notes.
Okay.
Um, we did not receive the vending machines, so we were supposed to have the vending machines this year, so we allocated and we have not received them.
The ones that we paid for, right?
Oh, we most certainly did.
They fell off Santa's sleigh. They are just backordered because everyone, it's, it's like, we placed the order once it was approved, and it's supply and demand that's going on right now with these vending machines because they're, you know, the number, it's a successful program. And with labor in general in the country, people are swinging into vending in addition to the lunch program. So they are backordered.
Okay.
I know it's frustrating.
Uh, I know you gave me the date, June, so I think that's again in the notes, that they're expected in June. So we are anticipating that the revenue we thought we would have this year will be the revenue that's coming out of it, so we've projected it. So come June, should we not have the machines again, obviously, we'll have to.
And then does, does our new system to, that the kids get the lunch breakdown better? Because I, I feel like you can tell what they're ordering better than the previous one, the new school cafe?
Yes.
So then it rolls off right to a more.
More detailed, line item.
But how it helps with you knowing where the month, where it's supposed to go.
So we didn't, so we budgeted ten thousand dollars last year.
In twenty five.
Yep, and our actual is zero.
Our actual will be zero because we will not have them.
Okay.
And then before we move off of revenue, I just want to point out like the state lunch reimbursement. So in my review, this year we budgeted fifteen, which would have been a logical budget because at the time, they were probably, you were probably basing it off of the two thousand three, twenty three actual because the twenty four actual probably had not come in, it's a one-time payment. When that did come in, it came in at ten, we have received what that payment would be for this year, so that actual of eleven thousand is correct. So I decreased twenty six to be more in line with what we can probably expect.
Do we know why we've had a five thousand dollar swing in two years?
So, and correct me if I'm wrong on this, so part of this, this state lunch, the way, the way the reimbursement works, it's a, it's a match to what we have, and so if our reimbursements are going down, the match will go down.
That doesn't make sense to me, I'm sorry. Like, I don't know what that means.
It's the, it's not actual, this, this state lunch reimbursement, it's not actual lunch reimbursement, it's a match that we get in relation to other reimbursements that we have. And so if our reimbursements are lower, the match will be lower, so it's all depending on what we've done. I can get you the exact how, how it ties out.
So it's not like they give you, like, you have twenty kids on lunch reimbursement, it's not like you get, you know, whatever, five dollars per kid per day.
And it's, it's part, part of it comes in and it's based off of the prior year. So if, when you do, this is a very fun document, the net cash resource document, like I think, I think I sent out to you previously, but we're doing it now for last year, and it's based off of that, so we put all the information in, but I can forward that to you.
That's great, thank you. Any other questions on revenue? Okay, do you want to move on to the middle section?
So cost of sales, so this is, um, this was an area that we spent a lot of time on, really going back and forth because your initial inclination when you look at this is to look at what we spent last year and think, oh, gosh, food prices increased, we're going to have to increase this, and it should be at four hundred and twenty thousand. But when we really looked at what we were spending this year and we look at how much we've spent through December and what we have in, we are projecting out that we're actually going to be closer to where we were in twenty twenty three. So with knowing that there is inflation, knowing that there's going to be rising food costs and still maintaining at the same level, if our projection is correct, that we're going to be somewhere around three seventy five, we think holding that flat at four hundred thousand should be more than sufficient for next year, for the increases. I don't know if you want to add anything to that. We, we really did try and, and look at everything that we've been spending and what the rising costs were and where the areas were where there were increases, and could we expect that to be even higher? But I, I think we both felt really comfortable with maintaining that and still being able to keep the same level that we're offering.
You know, it's just always reworking the menu based on the food cost and also looking at the acceptability for the students. Um, the students like rice and beans, beans, beans are so cost effective. And we're able to, we can have like a half portion, a half protein of beans with a half protein of chicken, say, so to speak. And the acceptability we're finding is equal, and yet we've saved money, and it's healthier. So it's, we've really been reworking the menu on a, a win-win for the food costs.
And, and we confirm, so what you're looking at for the year to date for twenty twenty five, that is the actual, so that is through December, so those are our costs through December. So if we look at having the second half of the year be somewhat similar to that, you know, you will come in under budget from what we had projected.
So that's four months of costs, right, and then we'll have five.
So for us, it, it will include anything that we did for summer food service as well.
Oh, okay.
So we will have summer food service in that.
Thanks. Any questions about those two things? Anything about milk of note? It looks similar.
Pretty straightforward.
Yep. Do you want to go through the rest?
Sure. So probably big, big difference that you're going to notice is the salary and benefits, a big drop from what was projected last year. I will, I will be honest, because I don't have any of the historical of how that number was, where they were at this, at how you arrived at the six fifty, I don't want to speak to that because I could be way off. I took what we had, so my number that I did is I took what we had for current positions right now with those salary and benefit increases, just like I did for all of the other staff. And then we went through all of the open positions that we currently have, so positions that we are currently budgeted for, that we know we will have, those are included, and I did a salary worksheet very similar to how all of the other positions were done. And so five sixty seven and that two oh two are straight from that worksheet.
So there's no reduction in staffing planned, it's just perhaps the budget for last year was not correct.
I don't know if it wasn't correct, I just think it was probably, it, it may have been done differently than how I did it using a different formula.
Watch the tape, Leslie.
And so.
I'm just saying.
I, I, I.
I watched, I listened to them in the car, it's highly effective. Uh, I'm just saying, like, it is, if you were, ever were curious, there is a very nice recording of us going through this painstakingly.
That's it, and, and that's why I didn't want to speak to it because I don't.
No, that's fine.
I think how you did it makes sense, so.
So I, I did it consistent with how I did all the other salaries, so I could at least say everything that we've done for the district online is done the same way.
Yep, that makes sense.
So, and, and we went through, and I don't think there were any changes in positions or anything that we saw. We did, one of the things that we did take into account was, um, we do have substitutes in some of those positions, and we had to look at what that sub rate was and if there were going to be any changes for that, and that is also accounted for in that number.
In the salary number?
Mm-hmm.
We wouldn't have a separate sub line?
There isn't a separate sub line for the food service, um, so I have it accounted for in here. But in my separate document, I have it separated out.
Yep.
Is that just choice not to have it, like?
I, I think it was just because it's, there isn't a separate UCola that was specifically for that, for food service in the enterprise account, but it's not something that we can't make easy, easy for us to do.
It would be good to see what the sub costs are there, you know what I mean?
Absolutely, that's easy enough to do.
For other tech services, can you explain why it's only six thousand dollars, but it was twenty thousand dollars budgeted, but we've only spent five hundred dollars?
Yes, I can't, I'm like, I have to open my own notes. I apologize.
Is it the vending machines?
No, no, it was, I just want to be sure I'm saying the right thing.
Want to do a round laugh, Kev?
I'll answer that. I'm looking at the other charges. I, I apologize off the top of my head, I can't remember, but we did go through it.
This is, the, it's, when we, when I ask questions, I don't expect an answer, like, it's more just curious about things, and we can always follow up. Like, that's kind of what the purpose of today is, so no worries.
I believe when we originally, when, when we looked at this, this was one of the line items where there were extra funds put aside in this account for using some of the drawdown money.
Well, what are we supposed to be buying, I guess, is the question. Trish, let's buy some.
Well, I didn't put the number there.
Cash.
Like, what's tech services?
Well, you did, though. Like, you, you worked with the staff to, like, somebody, like, that, this is how we got here. Like, the school committee didn't make up these numbers, they were presented to us, and so.
I do know one of the things that I can speak to, so, so of that, this was one of the line items that was part of the drawdown. One of the other things that's impacting this is that the fifty three, five oh two line, it is across the board, both in the general fund and in enterprise for our Power School account. So our Power School account is one of those things where it gets allocated out to everyone because everybody uses it. It's what we use for hiring new staff. We drastically reduced what the Power School line is from almost forty thousand dollars to like four because there were services that we just were not using, so that brought everybody's fifty three, five oh two down significantly. So that is one.
So there's a portion of that that could have been that.
So when, with that, so if you look at twenty three and twenty four, that seven thousand, that five thousand, those are the Power School numbers, and that's what we can do.
So there's still fifteen thousand dollars.
Correct.
There.
And, and so I reduced it to, if we were to keep Power School and nothing else, this is what we would need for Power School, which is the six thousand.
Got it.
So that's how I arrived at that number, but we have reduced it, so I think that number could probably even reduce even more.
Got it.
The next big jump, the other charges, so we had electrical work that was allocated in both twenty four, and we anticipated electrical work in twenty five that we're going to need for some of the new equipment. Right now, in twenty five, it does not look like we need it, it looks like everything that was done in twenty four was sufficient for what we had. And so we know that there might be some things that come up with equipment that we might need, so we did need a little in that budget line, but that's the reason for that reduction is because we, we just don't anticipate, if we're not buying.
Which line was that?
That's right below it, so that's the fifty three, seven oh one.
That's the other charges, I don't know, other tech services, no.
No, other charges, other charges. So that was another one where the work has already been done, so we knew we could reduce it.
Got it.
Let's see, let me just see if I can find one. A lot of it remained, um, one that may seem a little off, just be, if you look at like the actual for twenty three and twenty four to now, would be the cafeteria supplies non-food, that's fifty six, three oh two. So our reasoning for budgeting at what it is is because we have the get the full amount grant that we'll have, that we have this year and that we'll have next year, so that is offsetting some of the expenses that would fall in those lines. So even though the actuals for the two prior years look higher than what we budgeted this year and last year, what we anticipate getting in the reimbursements from that grant will cover the offset.
So with that, when, I don't know how you all do it, but like with grants that are very specific, that are like, like that grant is for this department, would that not be listed as revenue for the next, next fiscal year? Like, is that not how you all do it?
So with something like this, we don't, and, and.
We submit an invoice and get reimbursed.
So they consider it, the way the grant works, it's an expense-driven grant that you get reimbursed for. So ultimately, the reimbursement will hit a grant line item as revenue, and then it will come out.
Okay, so it will be accounted as revenue somewhere, it just will be for this account.
Correct.
So you transfer it from.
Yep, it will do like a weird accounts receivable in and out, and, and then it will eventually wash out the expense, so it zeros itself out.
Okay.
But at some point, it will hit a revenue line.
Okay.
And does it have a line item as like grant, like so that we, you can?
So it will be specific to that grant, so every grant is kind of considered, has its own little fund, its own funded number.
But the expenses that we are planning on submitting for that grant, are they included in this budget?
No, they go, it's, it's all within that grant.
So they're just floating out there somewhere, so there's like basically another set of expenses that.
Yes.
Are incurred, but because they're offset, they're not listed here.
Correct, correct.
It might be helpful just to see that, too, to get a picture of what the whole thing is.
Sure, yeah, wait, but so that, so just like this has the sixty, the six oh oh one fund, the grant will have its own fund number, and it will be the revenue and expenses of how that kind of circular reference happens.
So sorry, that all makes sense, although it's weird.
It's very weird, but yeah.
In a different world, just know that, that's weird. With, you just said something, though, that got us there, which is something is in here that's getting paid by the grant, and that's where I got lost.
No, no, no. So, so where you would normally look at this and say, wow, in twenty three, they spent seventy nine thousand, and in twenty four, they spent sixty four thousand, you would think that we would want to put our budget at somewhere around seventy thousand.
But we're reallocating some of those costs to the grant.
Correct.
We're taking out.
Correct, so we're reallocating that and we're putting it here so that we can keep the operational budget in line.
Got it, thank you.
And that's true for all our, any grants we get.
Not, not all of them, but most of them are reimbursement-based, so like a title grant or anything like that, that money is all coming in and out, and the revenue is cycling in and out, all from that grant.
Okay.
It's not actually operationally hitting the general fund.
I think it just like to, because let's say grants like start disappearing, like it, it's a good idea, I think, looking forward to know like what, what we anticipate the ins and outs of each grant are.
Sure.
Instead of just saying we're getting a grant for one and a half million dollars, like, e- especially when we pulled the expenses themselves out of the budget.
Yeah, we can almost have a separate, like, count them separately, too, as well.
It's because like, when it goes away and we want to continue doing it, we need to know how much it costs because we're going to want to keep doing it. So I think that is smart, and also I think we need to think about how do we prepare for something like that? Right, like, do we put, like, kind of how we do the turf, right? Do we start putting money aside for when that fund grant's gone?
Which we can do because the enterprise fund does have a fund balance, so we could start assigning all part of that money from the fund balance to reallocate it.
You know what I mean? Like, I think we'd want to be prepared, and like, if we want to continue to have staff that's supporting that and different things like that, like, that's something that we should be proactive about. Other questions from the committee on this page?
Um, I feel like I'm on a postage kick, but weren't we?
Yeah, I was thinking about that one up because it was low, for the record. I was thinking about that one up cuz it was low, for the record.
Well, but you are mailing collection letters.
Oh, that makes me sad, why, we're harassing people to pay their lunch debt, when we're sitting on a million and a half dollars?
No, but.
We're not harassing them.
Well, we're sending collection letters.
So, can I say, I think the new system, I like it, but they, the old system used to send you a reminder and be like, hey, your kid's account is down.
You're not getting a low balance.
No, I find it after the fact. I get it after the fact, usually.
Nope, there's a setting, I had to go in and fix it.
Oh, it's a setting, that's why.
Put a little buffer in there for your setting, like, at twelve dollars or something.
All right, that's fine, I don't have.
It's different.
So, I'm thinking there's a lot of parents who don't have a setting, and maybe.
Oh, no, you mailed me a letter, cuz I didn't realize that I had to go in and change the notification, and I was like, oh, I owe.
So, maybe send out, cuz I didn't know either, and I always laugh, cuz I'm like, oh, like, I would, and you can like put a certain amount in, too.
Yeah, and as far as postage goes, too, we run a report to who has not resubmitted an application, and that we know is going to expire, say, October thirteenth to seventeenth, it's always like within a few days. So, as where, you know, we call, but we also send out the instructions to be able to apply online, we also send out the hard copy, it's kind of something, you know, we kinda go above and beyond, because we wanna capture that, and we don't want them to go into debt, and then all of a sudden, now they're free again, now we've got some money just out there. And we also send letters out to, um, in this case, if a family member was on Medicaid and the household there, household was now free, it was something new this year through the USDA and the Department of Ed, so because that was something new, we sent out a notification, hey, did you know that you are, you know, that your family qualifies for benefits? So, um, but we collect a lot more than eight hundred dollars.
But those letters, that's coming out to anyone whose child might be buying lunch and not paying for it, and then who's money?
That's a different, I mean, we're mailing, when, when Jen asked about just mailing, we're mailing applications out, we're mailing information out, we're mailing. The letters don't automatically go out, we only sent, mail a letter when it hits a third, certain threshold, because people are getting texts.
Well, I just was questioning why it went from three hundred to eight hundred, that was my, like, what are we mailing?
Why are we budgeting for?
And why are, like, what are we, what's the difference in, like, twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five?
It went for, uh, four hundred dollars, basically, well, I would assume because we've made, we, we're at three sixteen now.
Yes, so I was concerned that we were gonna be higher than where our twenty twenty-four actual was, so I aligned closer to what twenty twenty-three was, and I said.
And Jen, honestly, part of that might be the Sherry and me factor of, like, you don't know until you, you don't realize that it's not the same, and then, like, then you get a nice letter from Trish telling you, and then you realize that you owe money, like, I, we had no clue.
Especially in middle school, when your kids are.
Right, even like the phone calls, or high school, like, phone calls, we get, like, remind me, like, sometimes kids just go to buy, buy something, and they go, it's on the account, someone's taking care of it, and you don't know until you get a phone call.
I even received a phone call at my own.
Trish, do we have, do we have a requirement? Totally speaking out of turn, I do not know the answer I'm asking, but I, I believe, at, at one point, and I, I will check on this, there was a requirement that you had to reach out at least once before the end of the year for negative balances to close out as part of that net cash resource, like, you had to show you made an attempt to collect, to collect on debt. I believe there is a requirement that you have to do it at least once, so.
The, the answer to that question is, Leslie is guessing at how much.
Yeah, no, that's fine, that's fine.
Where is the, where does that get captured? So, say, the end of the year happens, and there are certain students that, and I know Trish and her team do such a nice job making sure that students are fed, which I so, so appreciate, but like, I imagine that there's some students that graduate or leave our district that have negative balances, where does that get reflected and absorbed?
So, this is where it gets interesting, and, and, and I think it's different here, because we have our own enterprise account, so we can use, it will come out of.
I'm fine with us just covering it, but I wanna know how much we're covering.
No, I'm saying.
Recover it and clear.
Yes, it will come out of our fund balance, and we will clear it, so typically, you're, if, if you were operating any other district, it would come out of your general fund, because you can't pull it out, because it's, it's all kind of commingled, but because we have an enterprise fund, and we do it differently here, it will come out of our fund balance.
What I'm saying, though, Leslie, is I never, it's not reflected anywhere.
We can, we can certainly.
You know what I mean, like, I would imagine there would be a line that says.
Lunch debt.
Lunch debt coverage.
Exactly.
Yeah, not in a bad way, but I just feel like that.
Yeah, then we know.
Comparatively, you should know and be able to kinda be able to track how much debt we're, what's that called, there's a word for it.
Absorbing?
Yeah, that's not the word I was looking for, there was a fancy word, maybe.
The, what are we buying for kitchen equipment this year?
Um, for this year, we are buying, um, the vending machines are in there, that was a hundred and ten thousand dollars.
No, I mean, like, for the next year, like, the twenty twenty-six budget is eighty thousand dollars.
We, oh, for eighty thousand dollars?
Yeah.
Well, one thing that I have my eye on is we're going to, we have the, already have the hood installed at DMS, and of course, I was just waiting for the future of all the buildings, but we're gonna be able to have a rotisserie, but when you think about a rotisserie with the spits, it's actually baskets, so we're able to do potatoes and vegetables and whole chickens, and we're gonna be able to do more scratch cooking at Davisville Middle School.
Gonna be Davis.
And then, um, and, um, that is like what I have my eye on right now, the other thing, too, is that we have, um, with Davisville Middle School, we've already had a plan for some of the new line equipment to be replaced, it's the original, the steam table is this big, but the piece of metal is three times the size, so we're able to upgrade Davisville Middle School line.
And that line, five, five seven three oh five, that's the total, that eighty thousand is that, but then we had two hundred thousand this year, and it looks like we've only spent ten thousand of that.
Yes, and part of it is we haven't paid for vending machines yet.
Yeah, but that was in the, oh, no, that was.
That's just the, that's just the revenue.
Yeah, that whole, I don't think that was all vending, though, if I'm remembering correctly, so we should go back and check and see what else you get to buy. You know what I mean, like, I don't think it was, I don't think I, I don't remember two hundred thousand dollars with the vending machines, like, it was expensive, but it wasn't.
It might be the Davisville middle line, I would have to go back and look and see what.
We should check, because if you wanna spend that in FY, we, if we wanna spend it this fiscal year, we're ordering it now. You know what I mean, like, timeline-wise, if we're gonna get anything in on time? It's a good problem, Trish, but we also don't wanna add to the one point.
Well, we have to. We have a hun, one point five million to be planned spending. It could be on equipment, it could be on.
Student lunches.
It could be on any of our operating expenses.
Could it be buying lunches for kids, could we give free lunch to the district for you?
You wouldn't wanna do that.
Why?
Because the money will go quickly that way.
We gotta, we need to, we need to do something now.
Well.
And, and, and when Trish and I were talking, so we, we, we have this eighty thousand here, so like, a total of one oh nine is kind of the strategic spending, but what we talked about was that it can be a conversation, like, we can say, okay, what do we need, we have money, so this is conservative of things that we really want for that year, but we certainly can expand that, so if we want to look at, um, each of the other areas, each of the other schools, we can do that, one of the things that was brought up, that was in one of the documents I sent you, we were talking about the move to DA, and improvements that might need to be done to the cafeteria there, we certainly will have funds, we can use those funds, so it, it was just like an extra consideration of, do we need to make adjustments to that cafeteria area, if we're gonna be having different students there, we have the funds to be able to do that, so we can increase that significantly, if we, if we find that that has to be done.
And would I submit to the Department of Ed, because they also know supply chain, just planning, ordering equipment, bids and all that thing, it, it's basically goes over three or four years, so they know, okay, you have one point five million, this is what you're doing here, this is what you're doing there.
We have one point five million, and we're only supposed to have three months, right?
No, that was after you pull out the three months.
Correct, so.
We have one point five.
So, is, is somewhere on here that I just don't see, like, what the actual balance in the account was at the beginning of the year, or the projection for the end of the year?
It's, the, the actual balance is not in here, but I can, I can add it, please.
That would be helpful, thank you.
Maybe not a, maybe not a whole year, but could you do like an initiative for a month or something like that?
What's that, I'm sorry.
Sorry to say, maybe not a whole year, but maybe an initiative for a month of lunches or something.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think for, for, I guess my, my comment would be, like, kind of like, thinking about strategically, like, we're never gonna spend, like, like, we need to think about how we're actually gonna spend on that money, because.
I think we're better looking at that money and how it goes into capital and improving our kitchens than just offering free lunch, because.
No, I mean, I, I heard Leslie just say that we pretty much have exhausted what we needed to buy for the cafeterias, cuz we were bringing that.
No, because we, no, we have dish machines that we're going to need, we have automated dish machines in two of the schools that have never been replaced.
We should definitely put those in this budget.
And they are in, um, the strategic spending plan, so.
So, I guess it's a strategy.
I mean, we, we could, we could take the entire strategic spending plan and put it in the budget.
Yes, that would be great.
We had to.
But a long time, right? Well, we approved the purchases, but I don't know if I've ever seen the strategic spending plan.
So, update and share.
Would, would you have given, would you have given that to them prior to going to write?
No, no, how, I mean, it got passed along.
That's okay, I think it'd be helpful to have, because I wanna, I think the thing that I'm concerned about is, and I remember last year, we went to the town council,
and they were very concerned about this account, and they were very questioning about it and different things, and so, I, I get that we wanna make sure that we have money in case we have things, but like, it, we have a responsibility to the taxpayers to utilize these funds, and, and so I wanna make sure that, like, we, we have a real, it, it's not in here right now, so I think we need to figure what.
But we also have the Woodford Middle School kitchen.
Yeah, but that's covered by the bond.
Yeah.
But also, in the meantime, we do need to continue to maintain that building, like, we can't just be like, oh, we're tearing it down, like, it has to, we have to continue to have a standard for students that.
Right, and when you have a building that's old and a kitchen, there's not a whole lot of wiggle room for us to do anything in that particular.
No, but I also think we shouldn't be like, oh, we're replacing it, we're not gonna do X, like, we wanna make sure we're keeping the same standard for students, so. And maybe then, and then maybe moving things to other buildings once we, that maybe we purchased or something.
And we can add, so, so keep in mind, too, is the strategic spending plan doesn't just have to be in kitchen equipment, we can allocate it to other lines, so like we did.
Cafeteria furnishings.
Furnishings, or if we need electrical work, or any type of plumbing work, or anything that goes to that.
We bought a van.
Yep, we can put it all in.
Like, yeah, I just think, like, I'm not seeing a lot of that in here, so if you all think of that, that'd be great.
Yeah, I agree with you, as far as, why is this money here, and why are we sitting on it?
Yeah, so let's just, let's just say, like, I'm ready to use.
Other questions from the committee regarding this fund?
My last question was, what is the Primero Edge under technology software?
So, that's the new, that's school cap, school cap thing, so that replaces my school box.
Why is it not budgeted for this year, I thought we had a budget for that.
What line are we on?
So, what was budgeted for this year was, at, at least what I can identify was the hardware that needed to go with it, but the, then there's the whole software that replaced the My School Bucks, now, I vaguely remember when I first started that there was the intent that we were gonna be keeping My School Bucks, which wouldn't, that that happened, and then we made the switch.
Sorry, what line are you, no, we're, we're lost.
Sixty-two.
You're saying sixty-two, but that's not a number?
What's that, what's that, I was talking to you online.
I'm not online, okay, sorry.
I'm like, we're on the paper.
Jen, you and I were saying, people are like, it's row sixty-two, so technology software, technology software, so write about it.
Five seven three one one.
The hardware.
We had that. So, it was not, um, but what we can certainly do, and I think was what we had talked about, is we have not spent all of that fifty-seven three oh five, that two hundred thousand that was budgeted, so we can reallocate the budget down to that line item, so that, right now, the account is, the, the budget overall is not negative. So, so we'll just reallocate, so.
Yeah, but those vending machines are gonna hit this fiscal year.
Right, so as long, and, and, so as long as, as long as it's covered, we can, we can reallocate that, we, like, we have strategic spending plan money that we can put in there.
Yep, I was just saying that, like, even though we don't have the vending machines yet, it sounded like they were gonna come in this fiscal year, so that even though we're not gonna make any money from them this year, we will pay for them this year.
Yes.
Which is fine, but like, that, that, just knowing that is important, I think. Um, where does the fee that families pay go, does that go directly to the company?
Yes, that is their service.
We don't mark that, like, that just disappears?
So, that, I believe.
Cuz I thought we weren't gonna have a fee this, like, with this new company.
Actually, I'm gonna argue on that.
I mean, we, the school department did, was not paying a fee, but the household pays a fee.
You do every time you do.
That's how it was previous as well.
It's actually worse now, because we have to do every hundred dollars.
Yeah, is, is there a reason why there's a, just curious, like.
A cap on it?
A cap, like, do we do that, or just the company?
The company does that, um, there are different tiers that we could, if we raise the tier to, like, five hundred, from what I recall, all transaction fees are gonna go up to that amount. So then, if I was just putting forty dollars, if I'm putting five hundred on my kid's account, I'm gonna pay, say, it's three dollars, if I'm putting forty dollars on my child's account, it's gonna be, I'm just using the term three dollars.
But now.
So, that is something we could do, but it would affect all, um, everyone's deposit.
Cuz it's not, like, if you have more than even two kids, it's only fifty dollars.
You can only do a hundred bucks at a time.
Yeah, and I mean, it's not, I think it's not for elementary, I think it's when your kids are in middle school and high school and there.
They start, yes.
Spending more than they normally do. And if you have three or four kids, you can only have twenty-five dollars on each of their account.
Yeah, so we can look at that and make a, an educated decision on, do we wanna do that or not, and how many other, we can just.
And we have to defer that cost to the families, right, the district couldn't use the one point five million that we have to cover the transaction fees?
I'll need to look through the contract that was signed really closely and just see if that's.
I'm just thinking, like, I, I get that, and just, I'm trying to think of different ways that we can give the money back to the, to the district.
And the conversation when we switched to this was clearly that this was going to be better for the families in terms of costs, and it's not, so I wonder where the disconnect is there.
And I wonder if they could, I wonder if we could say to them, like, I, I get the fifty dollars, but too bad it's not per, or a hundred, but like, per student versus per family.
I know, I, like I said, I can, I can, there is a number of thresholds.
Yeah, so let's see what the threshold are, yeah.
And also, we could also just calculate what would be the cost for the department if we were to waive the transaction fees.
I'm sure we can get a full report of what it is are, for everything that we've done for year-to-date, and then we can project out.
Is it possible, too, to get what the N is for students who are, like, getting the state and federal, like, it, I'm gonna say free lunch, but that's not the, the verbiage anymore, like, just curious, yeah, like, how many students in the district are getting benefits versus?
I'm guessing it's around eight hundred, okay, eight hundred and sixty-two, maybe?
Yeah, I was just curious how that compared to different year, like, the past fiscal years, to see if it's up or down, cuz that affects the budget.
Sure.
Thank you.
We usually stay around twenty percent overall for the district.
Any other questions regarding this?
What is in that maintenance contract line, and like, like, it doesn't show up for a couple of years, and then it, ten thousand last year down, it's only two you're projecting, so.
Let me.
What is that for?
That was.
It's fifty-four three eleven.
Was that our question? No, that was electrical work as well.
Oh, okay.
That was electrical work, there was electrical and plumbing that was in there, and I believe that that had to do with some new equipment, so that twenty-six one ninety-three was there, and we didn't have it, I think there was the anticipated that we were gonna need work for the vending machines, that we have not spent, because no vending machines, and then we know that with any of this, you never know what to expect, so to completely zero all in a line makes me nervous, so we always like to keep a little bit in there, just in case, so that's the reason for the big change.
Okay, any other questions, thoughts?
So, it's really those two lines, the fifty-four three ten and fifty-four three eleven, to basically be added together for nine five, is what we're really looking at, okay?
Excuse me.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, Karen Pockel, the enterprise presentation that you've been discussing, which was on the agenda as a separate line item from the capital budget, was not provided as a document, is that something that we could get a copy of?
Uh, I'm, I'm sure we can, that's, that's this document that we're be copying out now, yes, absolutely.
Oh, okay.
Thank you very much.
There you go.
I appreciate it.
Okay, any other questions regarding that?
So, it sounds like maybe next meeting or before we have to finalize, we'll get some more information, and maybe some things can get added.
Yep, so I'll go through this list of items.
Including the spending.
And we'll, we'll talk about the spending plan, we'll add that, and.
And obviously, we wouldn't, we don't need to put all of it in, but there's definitely some things that probably should be reflected in that, so that we can. Yeah, and obviously we wouldn't, we don't need to put all of it in, but there's definitely some things that that probably should be reflected in that so that we can approve it.
Mm-hmm.
Is that true?
Absolutely.
Anything else on that one? Okay.
Okay, do we have the other enterprise?
So the other enterprise accounts, what I provided here and, um, for the most part here.
Thank you, Trish, thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you, Trish.
Oh, playing those like the business, Tim, the burrito, it hits good. My son loves the beef, he's ten out of ten loves Trish.
So each, for the most part, each, um, enterprise account has its own page. There's only one, the sports camp, that kind of extends over a couple of different pages. Because it has so many different line items that could potentially be spent out of, so that's the reason for the length. Overall, the enterprise accounts are all functioning well. They're all, we have no issues with any of them according to our audit. Um, they're all considered healthy, so what I have given you here, so if you look at gate receipts, you can see where we ended twenty twenty-four. Is that the sixty-three, oh, eight, four, that's where we started the year, year to date, we have brought in fifteen thousand to eleven. So if nothing is spent out of that account, we would project out that we would end the year with a fund balance of seventy-eight, two ninety-five point seven-one. I know that this is something that we have talked about in other school committee meetings about what can we use the gate receipts for and how can we do that? This is one of those accounts that I would suggest that we consider seeing what is needed for athletics, that is whether it be a one-time purchase, a capital, some some item. That is not part of the general operating fund that we use gate receipts for and we we spend this down a little. Because again, it's it's one of those where you don't wanna have this infinite infinite fund of allowance for this account, so. I my hope is that I'll sit down with the athletic director and we can really talk about, we've asked him to put together a five-year plan for us, so he is working on that now. And then with that, we can present what we would suggest on how to use this fund, so he's he's working on putting that together for us.
Any questions regarding the athletic gate receipt enterprise fund? And would the funds just be used for the high school or?
They can be used for any, yes, anything that falls within the athletics department for the district.
For any athletics.
And that's exclusive of, so there is that fifteen percent that is taken out of the gate receipts every year that's put into the capital reserve. So then there's also that capital reserve fund where we have additional dollars that can be used for athletics as well. Those are two funds going on.
Are locker rooms considered athletics? Because that did not get into the bond, the disgusting state that the DMS one is on.
I don't know, let me look into that and.
I'm not sure we could be able to use the gate.
For the athletes? I'm just, I I I'd like to at least look at it because.
No, we don't know, let's look at that.
It's really there for the phys, for Jim, for purposes of PE, I'm not, I don't know, I'm not sure we would be able to use the gate receipts to update locker rooms.
For the.
You've got the capital.
We use it for the turf and the PE classes use the turf.
Right.
And I will say.
I'm just saying, I just, I don't wanna break any laws, but I'm just curious on what it could be sent on.
Do we, cause I'll say the kids was that we had put in for that?
You're talking about the fifteen percent, right? I will say the kids, because they can't fit their sports stuff in the locker, leave it in the gym. So like if they play soccer or basketball and they can't fit it in their skinny locker, they're allowed to leave it the whole day down in the gym lockers. So sort of, you know.
Just something to think about, like everything about.
And I think it's just because they can't fit it in their regular.
Things that we have and things that we.
Something that's proved to be able to.
Or maybe some storage. Maybe it's more storage and versus.
The gate receipt one, is there a policy? Yeah, of what it can and can't be, yeah, so we can check that.
But that could be a way around.
Specifically put use for students, so you're having to see if that.
I can I can certainly.
No, I know, I'm just saying.
We'll still be solid when DMS gets through.
I remember the little that was a high priority for me, like having a safe place to change.
And and you are correct, there is a policy that spells out what we can and Mr. Tover is working on his plan based off of the policy.
Perfect. Great. All right, any other questions on that one? Is the fifteen, like we don't have the historical on this, like we just have like the twenty-four and then twenty-five. Like is the amount that we. Credit for income. More or less like that, I can't, you do you know what I mean?
Previous years?
Yeah.
It, there is a range, but it's not far off, but I do have a document that includes twenty-three, twenty-four that I had given previously that I can forward you.
No, that's okay, um, just as long, but I was just curious, it's fairly consistent is all I was looking for, thank you. Okay, moving on to music for an orchestra.
Okay, so this one you can see, um, the twenty-four, we ended fiscal year twenty-four with thirteen, oh, one, six. And that is including the money that we transferred out from that, um, capital reserve account. So that brought the account to, cause it was in negative, so it brought it to zero and then the difference that thirteen is what was remaining once it was, um, brought whole. So we opened the year with, um, thirteen, sixteen, and they have purchased the rights for the musical that we have this year, plus there was some additional expenses that carried over from the prior year. I am currently asking if that can be booked to the prior year, but it they're considering it immaterial, um, because it's such a small number. And so to do a prior year adjustment for twelve hundred dollars.
Yeah.
It's kind of a big deal, so right now it's incurred in this year, but either way, it's going to end, the account's gonna end up in the same place, cause it's just gonna change the fund balance. So right now, if they don't spend any money this year or don't bring in any money, they would end the year with six thousand. So we're hoping that we can be very creative with what they're doing this year to be able to keep the costs in line with the revenue that's expected from the musical.
They are doing active fundraising for their booster club and advertising to bring in additional funds for the musical this year.
And do we, you paid for tickets to go to see them anyway?
We didn't, and the tickets go back towards the club.
So, yeah.
Does the boot, did the booster club, um, contract the tech company that we're buying the tickets through or like we've never been able to purchase them online before?
That's all through the booster club, yeah.
All right.
Okay, well, and I believe that we can also use the, so unless it's different, the golf fan that we use for the gate receipts, we can't.
Cause it's very different than what they're looking for for students, so that's why they went with something else, Chaz and I hitting up with them.
Okay.
But that's, we're not paying for that.
No, that's strictly through the booster club.
And then is the set build included in here?
So this this does not include any of their expenses to date.
Oh.
And they they don't have, this includes what they have had to date, excuse me, so there's most of their. Expenses are gonna come at the end of the musical, yeah, once once they're done.
They bought, somebody bought the wood though, I saw them, hammering wood.
That's all from the booster club, so the booster club starts it.
Got you.
Okay, and so we don't see any of that.
We don't see any of it, no, and we won't see, we won't start seeing expenses until after, so what gets filtered here is after the musical is done. And booster club has a certain amount that they contribute and then once we have the revenue from that, that's what we pay the expenses out of.
And the only thing we pay for ahead of time is, do we have to pay ahead of time for the play though?
Yes, yes, so that's that's the five thousand that you see, the fifty-seven, seventy-five, I think, yeah, fifty-seven, that's the the rate for the musical.
Who's the other professional services for thirty thousand dollars last year?
So we have people that we contract out for costumes, we have people that we contract out for, uh, orchestra.
Musicians.
Musicians that come in, we have photography, we have different resources that we use for printing, um, there's, uh, what the heck is it called?
Electrical.
No, there's, so there's electrical, there's like lifts that they have to use for certain things, so we have to have, um, different rental equipment. And I don't know why I can't, the playbill, thank you, there's there's the printing for the playbill and the different various things that come with that, so. I can certainly give you an itemized list.
I I just like looking at these numbers is supposed to be like a self-sustaining fund, right?
Mm-hmm, yes, 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 you are absolutely right, it's supposed to be self-sustaining.
Remember last year we moved to the end because they came in.
It was not self-sustaining last year.
No, no, it operated a loss last year, so obviously it is completely contingent on how much revenue they bring in from the sale of tickets. But on top of that, it was a very, um, expensive play to produce in terms of set and costumes and what was required for it. So that, exactly.
Yeah, cause without like twenty-three or twenty-two to look at, like I, you can't tell whether this was an anomaly or it's.
So do they not do? A budget? Like, you know what I mean, like, and sorry if I'm not like, that's, it sounds like a silly question, but like I'm seeing like the actuals, right? For twenty-three, four, but I'm not seeing like the twenty twenty-four budget numbers.
So they have not historically done a budget, but it's something we can certainly have them do moving forward.
I'm just thinking like that might be helpful because if we sat down and we said, hey, you have this much money and like we anticipate that you might make like this much from ticket sales. Then you could set forward a budget and then they would know like, hey, costumes need to come in here and if they're gonna come in extra, you need to work with the booster club. Or, you know, like I feel like we we had no idea that we were gonna be that not.
No.
Even even last year, but we could have been, like and and we could have raised tickets on the prices or we could have, you know, like there's things that you could do to offset an expensive play and not none of that happened. So I wanna make sure that we don't wind up in that situation again, cause even though this is an independent thing, we had to take money from something else to put in last year.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
And and I also think that one of the things that they need to consider is that because we have historically done the musical X way, does not mean that that's how it has to be done.
Right, and we also talked last year.
And I know it's a big, I know it's a big, you know, an important part of what this district does, so.
Well, that was my question, do we have a budget for the drama department that covers this, cause like I'm thinking athletics gets a budget, right? Like.
So they, so the music department and and drama had, does have, it is part of the operating budget, so they do have stuff for like their traditional day-to-day. Because this is such a separate, big endeavor and it fluctuates, it's very, I I would say it's very hard to keep it in an operational, yeah.
It rounds that way, it's almost like a capital expense.
Do they ever reach out to the rec department? Cause I feel like they do a really good job.
By us at all.
With the plays they do.
Correct.
Keeping it, generally like they do a play every vacation and I feel like they must have a budget and stay within it. I mean, the kids pay to do it, but like I'm.
Right, and I think there's a, there's a bunch of money that goes into, you think of the the set and the cost of running it.
Yeah, I'm just thinking going forward, how we can have transparency and the school committee can, like, cause we technically, do we approve this or does it just live?
So it it lives independently.
Yeah.
There are things that typically with the enterprise accounts, we would bring forward to you if we wanted to use it for something that is outside, like the musical, it's used for the musical.
Yeah.
So the items that happen within it typically don't come to you for approval because they all fall within the guidelines of what the money is used for.
Got it.
But I mean, there's certainly things that I think could be discussed with them, like do we need to hire professional musicians? And do we have to hire professional costume designers or?
We had this conversation last year, um, with Mrs. Kreides, I mean, before she retired. And Ms. Snicklestein and I, and we talked about, okay, where do they end, what do they need for the future? And went through all the pros and cons of what they currently do, of bringing in someone else a costume designer, having, um, professionals come in to assist. With our CTE students, I mean, to go and learn music to a musical, and so if you think I learned last year from meeting of the department, it's a lot. It's not easy easy music for the students just to pick up, so that's why they do need some professionals, but you have a music director as part of that. So there are stipends or, you know, that are going out to these professionals that are coming in. They, if we wanna look at saying, do they need a budget since this is something big and when you when you look at it, I mean, it's something that the community looks forwards to. It's something our students look forward to every year, I mean, we did, we put a lot of money into athletics. What about other areas that we have for students? So, I mean, it's just something we gotta have to balance out. Always my understanding have and have been self-funding through fundraising, through selling of tickets, through advertising, fundraising, selling of refreshments at the, um, plays.
No, and I'm not, I am, I think they do an excellent job and I'm very proud that they do an excellent job, I'm not, that's not what I'm asking, but what I'm concerned about is when they fall short, if they fall short. Whose responsibility is it, right? And ultimately, it's the district's, yeah, that's right, and so I'm looking for a little bit more oversight. In the budgeting process, because it's not just like all by itself, like it's it's all it's all fine, except for what happened last year. And I wanna make sure that that doesn't happen, cause then that impacts other things, but also I think to Jen's point, like, we, I wanna make sure that they feel supported by the district as well, right? And so maybe long-term considering that piece of it too and like what like gets budgetarily.
Right, cause I kinda feel like we're budgeting, right, for like athletic officials, which are needed to run a sporting event, right? Those things are in our budget, but there's nothing in our budget for this, which we know is happening every year.
So we do budget within the contract for a stipend for a director, so that is something that's budgeted. I know there's questions about the assistant director that has been provided, but there's nowhere in the contract that says that, but we always provide a stipend to an assistant director. So those are, like, that's budgeted, but we don't have supplies budgeted.
So the teachers that work for us get an additional stipend to do this play.
So your, yeah, your director, assistant director get a stipend.
And and I do know that there are, there are other teachers that provide other services, so outside of their teaching duties, they provide services, whether it be photography or print.
Right.
That perhaps can, if if it's some things that they are teachers, we can consider having that be part of our operating budget, so those stipends could be included as opposed to coming out of this. There are different things, like I said, the printing of the playbills, you know, having those printed by some of our CTE programs and having that done here and having that be part of the operational budget of those programs. That they would provide that, that would again, take some expenses out of the actual enterprise fund, um, if we're having, if they're being done by things within the district. And there are things, I will say, that that does happen, and so their their district-led, you know, initiatives is part of that program, but they are paid for out of this enterprise account, but we can certainly.
Where's the printing for the playbook in our expenses? I don't think we pay for it, I think it's.
No, it's it's under other professional services, it's under other professional services because it is how it comes in is an individual who is providing that service. So it's it's coming in as a fifty-three.
That's weird, that should be under printing, like why, like every vendor is like that.
It's it's just because of how it comes in, because of of how we pay it out of the enterprise account, but I can certainly split it out.
There's no way it only costs seven hundred dollars either.
Unless the booster pays for it.
Oh, I'm sorry, I I thought you were talking about the thirty thousand. I thought you were talking about the thirty thousand, that's.
No, I was talking about where, I guess I was asking what printing was.
Oh, that, I'm sorry, that's the one up above it, the thirty thousand, six, forty-six, other professional services.
So it all rolled in there, yeah.
Yes, it's all up in there, but I can certainly, I can split that out.
Yeah, I just think it would be like just for transcript, all right, anything else on this one?
And they do have a little bit of an idea of a budget, like, they talked at the booster's meeting, they budgeted about forty-five thousand for the musical.
The bu, the boosters club as well?
Well, not the boost, I don't know if the boost, but the overall budget is what they said, it's about forty-five thousand. So they have some idea of what they're spending.
They they only have.
I understand that, but it's not here on the numbers.
That's clear.
But the the expectation is that they will be making at least, I believe in past years, from what I had looked at, it was like around sixty thousand in revenue is what they anticipate. So we had a particularly low revenue year last year and a very high expense, so it just.
Yeah, no, and we get that.
But but the 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 expectation is expenses would be somewhere around forty-five and then they anticipate around sixty, so that there's money put back into the program to keep it going. That's from my conversations with the prior director.
And the ticketing system is probably paying for itself, cause that's, they gotta be up to it, just like we do for the food services.
And I'm going to dates to my calendar.
All right, anything else on that one? Okay, everybody go see Lily blonde this March.
I already come to the.
It'll be great and you will be helping the enterprise. I'm saying.
And I bought them online.
All right, sports camp, questions or or thoughts on this?
So one of the things I will say about this is this come up in conversation before, because the sports camp right now, the way the enterprise account works is that the money that comes in and the revenue that's here is solely for the sports camp. But from my understanding, it's barely self-sustaining and that this, that yes, that you can see there's like this fifteen thousand in here, they don't anticipate using that for the rest of the year. Cause the sports camp's already happened, summer's gone, it's done, this is what we have, and that next year, it'll be, they'll have the same thing, they'll they'll bring in, you know. Another twenty thousand that will cover everything that they need. This summer, because they had access, they did go ahead and buy some additional things that you'll see on here, so, um, they went in and bought like t-shirts and they bought additional stuff for the students. I think I, like, they bought, um, new volleyball buck, volleyball stanchions, um, I think that's what they're, um, is that gonna come right for anything? So there were a couple of things that had, were well past their useful life that they did use, so that's why there was some extra spend, but it has been a conversation, cause they would like to take some of this and allocate it out to some other option. They don't wanna keep it in this enterprise fund, so this is something that we're looking into, they wanna be able to use it outside of just the sports camp, which I don't really think we can do, but I told them I will look into.
When they buy like a volleyball stanchion or whatever, do they like put that in storage until the next summer?
As far as I know, it is, it is used all of the time. So it's purchased for the camp, but right now I believe it is being used.
And are we in a negative? This, so my reading is right, that the revenue was twenty-two, six eighty-five and they spent twenty-seven, three twenty-one.
So yes, yes, I'm sorry. I'm looking at it, trying to see. So when you look at.
Oh, or, no, or is it the bottom?
No, at the bottom. So what they did, so that's why you'll see that right now, if nothing changes, which it shouldn't change because the sports camp is over. They will have reduced their fund balance from twenty to fifteen.
Oh, to pick up the difference.
Yes.
I got it.
And Erin, to go back to your point, so that was the conversation is that my understanding was they were repurchased for the camp. So since that has happened, we, my conversation, they've been like, well, can we use it for other things? I'm like, no, it has to be used within this program. And that's when they wanted to allocate it out. My, my saying is no, but I can defer to the school committee on that. My, my understanding is this is.
So they're in violation of the policy?
No, they can just not, they can just stop using them.
Yeah.
Yeah, they can just stop using them.
Okay, great. Any questions regarding this one?
Well, yeah, I have a question. So where are we gonna leave it? So are we gonna tell them they have to stop using it or are we, okay. I'm just, I just feel like there was no.
Well, that's not really, like, I was just.
And this.
So I was concerned about like what was spent, like that's a different conversation or.
Right, but how are we gonna follow up with that different conversation?
Oh, I'll just follow up with the, the director. No, that, and, and we, we've already had that conversation. So that conversation has been had and he's in agreement and, but it's important to communicate that. I'm not gonna, I'm gonna be transparent about that.
Is there a fee to the students? Yeah, they, okay, so the revenue.
Yeah, the students pay.
Yeah.
For which, how are we still on?
To go to the camp.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, sorry, I was just looking at.
That's okay.
Okay. Next one, STEM.
So STEM camp, this is, um, similar situation. Um, it's self-sustaining. They receive, uh, the students pay to attend the camp. And what they pay covers the cost of any stipends, anything that they have. Um, they brought in considerably more, they, they were, uh, made better use of what they spent. Over the summer in terms of the supplies, cause they were able to utilize things from a prior year. So you'll see that their spending, um, was not as high. So their overall, we, we anticipate ending the year significantly higher because they were, they didn't spend as much. And they don't foresee spending that much. Where this will be helpful is where they ended the prior year, because it's a relatively new camp. I think they're just going into, this will be, upcoming is just their third year. Being able to fund the expenses early on, cause they have to buy the stuff prior to the camp, um, was a little bit challenging. But this year now, they've got enough money in there that it shouldn't be any issue, so that they can purchase stuff in time. So like this year, we had to wait until everybody got registered and we had the revenue and then we could purchase it. So it delayed it a little. But, um, now I think we've got that in mind and I think we have a good, good handle on the fund itself and the budget. So next year, it'll be, be a little bit easier for them.
Can you just fix the typo on the line that says sports camp revenue on that page?
No, I'm gonna leave it exactly.
Like, am I on the wrong page?
It's the fourth, fifth one down.
Yeah.
It just is, uh, the sec, the line right before the double line, right before you get to rev. Like at that last line of revenue, it says sports camp revenue. I think it should just say STEM camp revenue.
Wow.
It's just a tiny piece.
So actually that is the, that's gonna be the actual account. I'll have to change it in the system, cause that's pulled right out of our system, so.
Yeah, we probably didn't have a.
Exactly.
Camp that wasn't sport.
Sports, yeah.
Correct. So I will, I will change that in both parts.
So that's great that they have extra money to spend for, like, I understand what you're saying about that. But like if they're charging the same amount every year and not increasing their expenses, like, they're gonna always have that overage.
So we, I, from what I understand and communicating with them is that they were conservative with what they bought this year. Because they, because we were going into the program late, because they didn't have a large lot to begin with. So now they can buy sufficient amounts of things. From my understanding, it was a little tight this past summer. So I don't anticipate it being that much moving forward. But again, the, the woman who runs this program, the teacher who runs this program, her budget is unbelievable, spot on. She's very, very good and she has all that, so I can even provide that. Um, so I'm very confident in what she provides and how she does that. I will say that.
I, I can, this is a new program.
Yeah.
It's only a couple of years old.
Yeah.
It's, it's, it's a really tremendous program and it's growing. And the fact that like, I, I'm, I'm just saying to piggyback on what Leslie's saying here. Um, I'm really confident that like the, the people running this program are going to invest the, the, these funds.
Oh, I have no doubt.
Absolutely like to enhance this program and make it better and better every year for, for our students. It's a really tremendous program.
I was just thinking about like either reducing the cost to students or giving scholarships to students that might not be able to afford it, things like that. Could be, like, like, you know what I mean? Like, there's a way to, like, I know that and.
Yeah.
We wanna make sure that, they should be breaking even, is what I'm trying to say.
And they did actually bring up the idea of scholarship. That was something that they wanted to do and, um, we have talked about it. Cause that was one of the things that they thought would be great, was be able to have some, you know, reduction tuition for students that were eligible. So they did bring that up to us and it is one of their primary ideas.
Okay, any other questions on this one?
So just looking at the year-to-date, there's no director salary in there? They haven't charged that yet?
No, so, so that, this, this year in particular, because again of the rolling, how, how the funding was. That stipend was paid out of categorical funds that we have that roll year over year as part of the CTE program with approval from RIDE. So that was paid for this year only through that. And we went through, we have, um, categorical money that we get every year for certain programs. And because this program is supported by things that tie into the CTE program in robotics and engineering. Those categorical, categorical funds could apply to this. And so we went and got special approval from RIDE to be able to do that for this year, to be able to keep it sustaining. And they thought it was a great idea actually and supported that. And so then next year, it will be rolled into this budget.
Who sets the stipends and like, is there any union that concerns?
Stipends are all in our contract. They should be all in the contract.
I don't, I don't know. We don't know. I don't think the stipends for these are. I think.
They presented.
But this was students.
We have heard that, yeah.
These ones are students, but the other ones.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
This was part of a com, a comprehensive plan that they presented to us and, and we approved it.
So you, okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions on this one? That's for all of them?
Mm-hmm.
I was just curious, like, does the person running this STEM camp get the same amount of money that the person that's running the sports camp gets stipend wise?
I do not believe they're the same.
Next one. Computer repair enterprise account?
So, um, there's very little change, if any, to this account. Um, we, I will say that we did have some purchases of supplies for the first time out of this account. Um, I believe over the summer. And the, this is money that comes in from, somebody lost their cord.
Did you charge me for losing my cord?
Yes, so, I'm like, I'm trying, I'm trying to think of something like.
Never charged.
You, you have an issue and then you've lost something or something has to be repaired, that goes into here and then those repairs come out of here. So it's self-sustaining, so.
How was their balance then? Or is it, is it zero?
Oh, no, there's a fund balance of sixty-six thousand dollars, so.
Can I be used for any of Chaz's wish list?
Well, there's probably, we have to look at the policy. But that doesn't make any sense, right? Like if I give money so you can buy a nice Chromebook charger, because who knows where it is in my house? And then we buy said Chromebook charger, it should be zero.
Yeah, but is the insurance in here too?
Uh, I need to look into.
Do you know, like, insurance you can pay if you, your kid does something to the.
Yeah, well, seriously, that's, that's actually my question too. I have to look.
Okay.
Yeah, so maybe that's where we're all.
You're gonna take it to the home office.
You know, like the plus would make sense.
I don't think it's a bad thing and I, it's not bad. It's just like the overage in that account.
And, and we've been carrying that balance.
Sure, yeah. Okay, well, that's not a bad thing.
No, there will be a time, I'm sure, when, uh, new computers are gonna, that's gonna get hit.
It's your MacBook money.
That'll, that'll buy at least five.
I know, you can agree. All right, any other questions regarding the enterprise account? So it sounds like there's, we'll have some follow-up on some of the different areas.
Oh, can you, if it is the insurance, just curious, can, can you see how many parents actually?
Purchase that.
Purchase it?
I don't think it's the insurance. I don't think that's what that line is. I'd be shocked.
I don't believe it is. But I don't wanna say yes or no, cause I don't.
I can let you.
I can go in and I can dig into it and really drill in and see. Cause like I said, this, there's not a ton of activity that happens with that account. I mean, obviously you can see there is activity, but we've been carrying, carrying that balance for a while. So I'll, I'll dig into it and I'll.
Our kids have actually been going with it.
Okay. For, so that is, we did capital, we did enterprise. Anything else Ken that you wanna, before we move on to the other document?
I guess all of them.
That's all of them.
I have one question on this. Are, are we going to this or are we?
I, I think so. I don't know.
I think I get that one.
Like, I wasn't sure. We didn't go through the whole presentation up there?
Oh, yeah, we stopped, we stopped at the fund balance.
That's my question.
Yeah, no, we're gonna go back. I think we're going back.
There you go.
I'm not, I just didn't know. Do we wanna go to that slide on, um?
Okay. So you, in, in your packets, you should have the, um, updated, the full fund balance document that is typically given to, um, the school committee. And I apologize, I omitted it from the email that I sent earlier. So you do have, this is just a little snapshot of it, but you have the full document. So now that the audit is complete and we can go in and we can pull out, you know, what we're looking at, what the changes are. I have gone through and updated the document completely. So we can, um, see where we're starting the year. We've removed off items that have been completed from this, um, from any of the work. Any of the, um, items that have been incurred or assigned or committed. Um, so we're starting with what I would consider a clean slate for fiscal year twenty-five. So what you see up here is just a snapshot of what our fund balance was at the beginning of twenty twenty-four. So that was the five million, eight ninety-seven, two thirty-two. And then how we arrive at that net change of nine twenty-eight, nine ninety-four is what's listed below. So we have our beginning fund balance. We transferred out from our fund balance, two million, two hundred and thirty-nine, two oh-two. So a portion of that, which you'll see on the next slide, was re-appropriated back into our general fund. The remainder of that is what was transferred out of the fund balance into our capital fund. So we could be able to pay for some of the projects that we had going on throughout the year. Then we had an increase into our fund balance at the end of fiscal year twenty-four of three million, one sixty-eight, one ninety-six. And there's a slide that explains how we arrive at that number as well. So I'll get into that in more detail. So that combination is how you get to the audited net increase in our fund balance of nine hundred and twenty-eight, nine ninety-four. So when you, we have our audit presentation next week, you'll see this is, that's the number that they're gonna present. That's how they present it, is the net change in our fund balance as opposed to operational surplus. But I wanted you to understand how we arrived at that number. Any questions on this slide before I go?
So our surplus was not nine twenty-eight, our surplus was three point one.
Three point one.
Okay, that answers my question.
Yes. And we will get into that three point one because it is, it is very clear. And next week, when we have the, the audit presentation, you'll see as well, he'll, um, explain the, you know, similar scenario. So what our activity was. So I, I wanted to explain how we get to the, you know, two million, two thirty-nine and then explain how we got to the three million. So this slide explains how it was broken out. So if you look at the last fund balance document that we had from October, you will see all of these items will look very familiar to you. So we had our reappropriation that we had done. That was the five hundred thousand. That, um, goes back into our general fund. So that's not allocated anywhere, um, in terms of the capital number. What was moved over to capital was this set of items. And of these, some of these you will see are still on the fund balance because they are not, some of them are not fully paid for. So we wanna, we wanna keep that money and covered on there. But, um, this makes up one million, seven thirty-nine of the two, two thirty-nine, okay? And these are all items that were previously approved by school committee. So surplus, how we arrived at the surplus. So one of the big things to note is a huge portion of that was from salary and benefits. So we had one, almost one point six million dollars in difference from budget to actual. But, um, if you, if you dig down and you look at how that, how we arrived at that, it was not a budgeting issue. It was that we had more than thirty open positions throughout the year. So those thirty-plus positions accounted for a huge amount, um, that we did not use of our appropriated funds. Being that we are significantly better staffed this year, that we, we should not have this problem again, obviously.
Do we all have any open and unopened positions we have currently?
Um, I do, I can, I can probably put it up and I can get it to you. It's, it's.
It was like nine.
I think I was gonna say, I think it was nine. It's, it's less than ten. It's less than ten. Yes. In, last year alone, we had twenty-six TA positions that were open.
Yep.
Um, and we had, you know, there, there was a variety of reasons, but it, it was a significant number. And then within purchase services, so we had, this is a, a combination of things. So we did have items that were originally budgeted for, that then became allowable within S R. And as we moved things around in S R, some of those items were covered there. So they were in our operational budget as being needed and we still used those services, but they were just covered using other funds. Not all of them, but there was, you know, an amount, um, this thirty-six is, is what I have that is known, but there was a combination. So, um, some psychologists, we had some like evaluation services in different parts of them. These psychologists that I'm mentioning, mentioning up here in purchase services were the actual, like, if we had had hired those individuals. But from a third party, not from salaries. Because we did have that anticipation, but we ended up, um, not needing as many as we had, as we had budgeted for. So, um.
So we had budgeted to hire an external interpreter, but then we didn't need it.
Right. So, so in this particular instance, and I, I know off the top of my head, so this, we had budgeted seventy-five thousand dollars for interpreter. Because it was needed for a particular student, that we then did not have that student.
Yeah.
So then we had that. But at the beginning of the year.
When we were doing the budget, I thought we would have that and therefore it was in.
Absolutely. Same with, um, I believe there was like, like we have our personal care attendant. We had, we had, it was budgeted for more than one student. We ended up only having one student. So there was differences.
Yeah, and that's just the nature of working with students. Like, that's just gonna always happen because you can't predict to that extent.
Exactly. So what's not represented here, which I think is important to note, is that we had this, but we, we did go over in our substitute line. So there were offsets, so there, there were, in addition to what we're seeing as being a surplus in our purchase services. We, we went over by an equal amount in our substitutes, which kind of balanced out. So there was potential that that number could have been higher, had we stayed within budget for substitutes. But our substitute line was high because we didn't fill the positions. We had all those open positions, so. Uh, but I did wanna note that, that there was some offset in that purchase services area. So we had, you know, a large chunk of what we thought we were going to need, we didn't need. But then on top of that, we ended up with over a million dollars of additional revenue that was not budgeted for. So that accounted for the other.
Can we go back to the curriculum?
Sure.
What, what's that?
Jody, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe sixty thousand of this was Lexia that was covered by RIDE, right? Was that, was it Lexia? I don't wanna say the wrong thing.
It's okay, follow.
But there was, um, there was a portion of curriculum that was budgeted for that we thought we were gonna have and RIDE ended up covering it. And then there was additional curriculum that we did not end up purchasing.
You don't need an answer right now, but can we just?
That's okay. But yes, yes, I, I actually have it, so I can get it to you relatively quickly.
And then what was the specific services that were purchased through S R three that were in the operating budget?
So we had.
I don't remember that exactly. Like, I know there was a lot of moving pieces at the end, but I don't know. Somebody asked me, hey, what was it? I don't know the answer.
So we had, um, some, there were what we anticipated being GED services that we were able to carry over. Because it, it was, we thought we were gonna have to put it back in the budget, but we were able to continue it. So we, we were able to put it out of the budget. So that I know was one of them. We had, um, evaluation services that we were able to increase, um, and, and pull out of S R. And there was one more, one more item. I'll go back to that last one. But those are the two that I know.
And then if you could just get the specifics of my curriculum piece?
Mm-hmm. And with the increased revenue, so we had 336,000 of additional state aid that came in throughout the year. We were able to earn in $520,000 in investment earnings above what we had. That budget was originally set at 60,000, so that, that accounted for a huge difference. We had some additional tuitions that came in from other L A's. This was mostly around the C T E. And I believe from, from looking at the budget and going through all of those lines, the increase that came in the tuition for C T E was higher than what we had anticipated. It came in at a higher percentage, and so that accounted for. So like it wasn't, the, the number of students was budgeted correctly.
We had 20 students in the C T E, we thought it was gonna be 10 NK students and 10 external students. It might, the, the ratio might have been different.
The ratio was different and we budgeted for a 2.5% increase in the tuition from Ride and it was 3.1. And so that was the flex there. And then miscellaneous revenue, we had a few items coming in, like we had some insurance proceeds, we had some sales of things. So I mean, that's only a small number, but when you add it up altogether, you end up with over a million, million dollars.
With the interest, what was the total interest earned?
Uh, 580, 580,000 every day. So, you know, coming back to what we're talking about this year.
Right.
You know, I think, I think 400 is, is a reasonable amount. And where we are here today.
Can I ask a question about the salaries and benefits? I was listening to the town council meeting from last week and they were talking, the auditor was talking about how three of our four pension plans in the town were healthy. And mentioned that it was the school district one that was, you know, like 68% or whatever the number was that we put into it. And I'm just wondering if that's just a standard school department issue? Or is it, you know, just because we have had all this turnover and, you know, you have to?
No, it's a, it's a quick, that's a great question. It's actually standard. And it's, we, and Kyle will certainly attest this next week, that we contribute the full amount. So we are at capacity, so our rates are dictated by the state. So we, we are told what our rates are and what we have to contribute and our North Kingston contributes right at that level. But because of how it had been funded previously, when you do the averages out overall, that, that's a normal percentage. So the school itself is healthy and operating at what we need to be contributing.
Okay.
And he'll be at Tuesday's meeting, so we can ask more questions to him. Any questions regarding this one?
So when we're looking at fiscal year. Oh, oh, I'm changing on mine, I'm sorry.
You didn't change yours. I just get my hand out of the way, so I'm flat line.
So when we're talking about fiscal year 25, when we look at the audited fund balance, what we are, you know, what they're saying we have available to us, we have $6,826,226. When we have the audit presentation, that is the number that we have that is available to us. When you're looking at that $928 that I referenced, that will be slightly different from what you'll see next week because there's approximately $50,000 in there that's restricted funds, but it is added to our overall and our audited fund balance. So it looks, you'll see a number of 987 as opposed to 928. But the 928 is what we have access to that we can use and assign. So that's what's in here. So within that, I did put up at the top, this potential reappropriation of 500,000 because it sounds like that's something that we all agreed would be necessary to do. But I did not put that on your document because we haven't finalized the budget, so I did not include that. So within the main document itself, I just want to reference it. So we have that 2% allocation that that's referring to. For those who may not know, we have a policy that we have to set aside 2% of the prior year's state aid and town funding, whatever the combined funding is, we take 2% of that and we've set it aside for emergency needs. So that is money that is automatically encumbered, we cannot use, so I have updated that. So this now reflects the correct number, you'll see it's a slight increase obviously because we received more funding. And then also within that category, that top portion is anything that was remaining from 2024 that we still have open, that we had encumbered, we've committed to, and we are in the process of paying. So what's not on that sheet, but I'll just kind of give you just a few ideas. So we have the in and out for the van that we purchased that is finally here and we now have for transportation. So that is reflected on the new fund balance, very exciting. And then we have the last few final payments that we have for stage two of money that we had allocated prior. We've almost entirely paid what we moved to capital, we moved $548,000, we've paid 543 of that. So that's almost closed out. We do still have the high school HVAC that you'll see on the fund balance that's committed. And that's because what we've done to date has been paid out of the remaining money from the bond, the prior bond that we had had. And there are some town capital allocations for the fire alarm, the masonry projects that are still ongoing. So that's what makes up that $1,499,556. Then we have an area of previously committed. So this is money that we have not transferred out of our fund balance yet. So it's still sitting there. It's, it's assigned so that we cannot spend it, you know, or, or assign it to something else. But at any point, you can change this, so the school committee can decide, we don't want to assign it to these four things anymore. We can move it. No, no money has been moved to the capital fund. So it's in there, it's just allocated to a project.
So like for example, when it's time to do the turf, we would transfer it to?
The capital fund.
The capital fund to pay for the turf.
Correct.
But right now it's just chilling.
It's just hanging out. Yep, that 700,000 is just hanging out there. But at any given time, if you say, I want to assign more to that number, we can increase it, we can decrease it, we can move it around. It can be as in flux as you want it to be because no money has been transferred out. So right now, the items that this consists of are auditorium upgrades, C T E program capital that we've set aside, and again, the turf, and that's it. So all of the other items that had been previously assigned was either moved or was assigned elsewhere for other programs, meaning stage two. So that bucket.
There's, we're supposed to be putting money into that though, right? Like so for, like I know that there's some language about the turf, the turf just always sticks in my mind. Like every year, we're supposed to put more into that, correct?
A certain amount.
Yeah.
So yes, I believe that is correct.
Yeah.
I am still trying to hunt down the exact language for that.
Historian?
I think it was supposed to be recommended of $150,000 a year.
If, if we had.
We, we were looking at, we were right, okay.
If we had an overage, only in years that we had a surplus, yeah.
Which is, so going back to.
So we need to transfer that, that number should go up.
So that's what we said, we want to come back to you.
Yeah, no, that's okay, that's what, we're workshopping.
Well, and, and that was the number that we had, that we believed was the correct number that needed to go in there. And going back to one of the questions from last week, you know, what type of things should we be doing moving forward? Is for technology or furniture or things, that's exactly it, is coming up with language that says, in the event that we have an operating surplus for money, or, not even just an operating surplus, in the event that we have a net positive change in fund balance, we should be allocating X to this category, X to that, so that every year regardless of what the committee is, that, that's happening and then we have that money.
Yeah, they would have to undo it. Like it gives, it gives like, I always think of it as like breadcrumbs. Like it gives like a trail of like what should happen, like obviously any committee can read, do something, but I do think it's helpful in understanding and planning for the future. And especially like with the conversation about for capital, like how do we make sure that we don't end up in a space that, where we have a lot of repairs and a lot of things? Like I do think we need to think about what that might look like. Because it's great that we have that for the turf and that they thought of that when they put it in, but like there's some, like roofs, like, you know, like things like that maybe, that we should be thinking about long term.
And, you know, obviously it should be said, I don't have it up here, but in your document you'll see, we have things that were previously committed. That does not mean that we can't add lines to this, we can't say, okay, these are, these are the things that we think as a committee are important and we want to add them and then we create it. So this is, this is a fluid document. So, you know, I have on here what has been assigned previously, but that doesn't mean that it can't expand or change. Or you, or you as a committee can't reallocate, you know, things that are allowable.
So. Some clarification on the contracts with Perkins Eastman and Rouse for the payments to them? Is that a, are those, I, I know they are separate entities. What I meant is, are, is that under one contract that these, because it, because they're on the same line, it looks like just one lump sum to these companies, but I know they're separate companies and they're doing separate work.
So, so they are separate and they are doing separate work and, and.
Can you go back one more second?
So they are, and on the actual document, in certain areas, there's one line where the payments are combined.
Yeah, there were two different lines under payments to date where they were combined.
Sure. So the reason they are like that on this document is because that is how, when we, when, at least we were talking about it at school committee, it was kind of, we need this money for this and we need that money for that. And it was kind of a collective amount of money that was set aside for various things that fell with both of those organizations. So for instance, we'll say we set $430,000 aside. It included stuff for Perkins, it included stuff for Rouse, it included stuff for Jacobs. So it's all one line item because that was one item that we.
When the administration presented it to us, they gave us a total number.
And we, and it was approved as a total number, as a total grouping as opposed to this much money. So it was for this project and these are the things that are encompassed within this project, this is the amount of money. So that's how I have it represented here. But they all come in, it, it all comes in differently. So, and, and that's certainly something, you know, I don't, I don't know if I would break it out on the fund balance just because it would make the document enormous, but it's available and we can certainly.
Yes, I, I certainly would like to see it and I'm sure you know that.
Yes.
Thank you.
It's fine. So which slide are we on? Do you want to go for it again?
Alright, so, so we, with that 4, 5, 4, 5, 7, 6, 6, 7, oh, that number's actually not right because we haven't assigned like that 150,000 that we're supposed to do.
Correct, so.
Yeah, so that number will change slightly.
Yes, so if we look at audited, so I'm just going straight audited, what it is, our, on the signed right now is $4,576,670. That will change based off of changing the turf, adding anything, you know, adding what we did in there if we reappropriate the $500,000 to fund balance. So that's, this is starting straight out of the audit based off of what was existing at the end of fiscal '24.
I think what would be helpful for me in like the greater conversation is like assigning the things that the past school committees have already committed us to, so that I can see that number, like the really what's on a sign number and then, because I.
That, that is, that is the actual number. So.
Yeah.
So if I look, if you look at the document itself, and I, if I could cast, I would put it up there so everyone.
Oh, because you have it on the bottom.
Yep, so, so that number that's at the bottom, that 4, 5 is, keeping in mind the 2% allocation, money from prior school committees, anything that's committed, that, all of that coming out gets us to the 4, 5.
So you had guessed on the one, that, I see it now, yeah.
Uh huh, so, but because we weren't 100% sure with the 150, I didn't want to give you a number that was inaccurate.
Is it on here though?
No, I have, I have what is currently allocated for turf.
Yeah.
But not new monies that would add to that. So if it's 150 that goes in every year, that 700, it'd become 850 and it would reduce your number.
Yeah.
Because we haven't used any of it.
Right, so this is, that's just known, known as of the end of the audit.
Got it. Thank you.
So I have a document somewhere of what the previous committee had like deemed, because it was, it was the turf, it was, it was a little bit into each of it. We, we wiped out some of the money, but I, I can dig it out if that's helpful so that you can see it.
Yeah, and there was, so I know one of the things that I was involved in, so I can speak to it. So like we originally had money in other capital areas, there was like $800 in there. And then there was money in physical plants, there was some leftover, I think maybe $10,000 leftover from something. And during one of the processes where we were looking for HVAC for the high school, we pulled, we pulled from all of those different places and we reassigned it to that HVAC. So I, I also have some of that broken out and I have prior versions of this document which I can certainly share so that you can kind of see the transition over, at least from when, from March of last year, my transition of the document.
And is the turf the only one we have like, say, a percentage attached to? No. No, there were some other ones. There was some, there's not. The turf is the only one we didn't touch. Okay.
So, so there are, you know, again, but realistically, every school committee, every year can reassign. You take your fund balance and you assign it how you see fit, based on your strategic plan, strategic, strategic plan of the district, what is most important to the district at that time. So even if you have items that are in that committed, assigned, or reserved, unless there's a policy that says we have to do this and that this committee can't undo that policy, you can reassign anything in that bottom area as you see fit. The, the items up at the top are like currently encumbered, it's a project that's happening, it's already in progress. If we start taking that money, then we can't pay for it.
But we could decide today that we don't want $700,000 to go to turf replacement, we wanted to go to, put in trees in, like I'm making that up, but like we could move that money.
Yeah, and, and that one, because there is a plan, I think that's a little, there's a.
There's some language.
There's more that has to be done to be able to do that, but ultimately every year, it, it's encouraged that you go through and you look at your fund balance and you say, does this still make sense to the district? Is this what we want? Is this what we need?
Do we know when they anticipate using this turf then?
There's some document I'll find that.
10 years was the anticipated replacement. Well, from the time we put it in, it was anticipated, it would have been 10 years after that.
Okay, anything else on this one? Right there, okay.
And just, I want to reiterate what I had said in the beginning. So our intent was, we do have things that were presented to us during budget time that are not in the operating budget, that now that we have this and we have a fund balance and we presented it to you, these are things that we like to present as items to be able to allocate some of these funds, to be able to get some of those capital projects done.
So that'll be in like future iteration? Yeah. Alright, um, do you want, so we have the draft budget document that we've seen, but is there anything Leslie on this one that you want to highlight? Or is there any conversations that you're hoping the school committee will kind of go work through to move forward in, in trying to solidify this? So I defer to you. Also, it's 7:07, if people need a break, like you could take a recess or, like last time you deferred and said, you'll just get what you want, so same vibe.
Yeah.
Alright, so we'll keep pushing through, but obviously it's been a bit, so if people do need to take a break, Leslie, do you need a break?
Uh, no, I'm good.
Because you're the only one that's.
I'm, I'm good.
Are you sure? We can take five minutes recess?
No, I'm okay, I'm okay.
Let us know if you do.
I will.
So I defer to you all on what, like we obviously don't have to go line by line through this, but whatever you would like us to talk through on this.
So I, I have a couple of items that I just want to point out. I know I sent, to the best of my ability, I went through as many questions from the last budget workshop as I could and I sent my responses to that. Some of the things, I'm still, I didn't want to rush, still, still working through that. But within them, one of the things I did want to talk about was the buses, Jen, because you had mentioned the lease on the new buses and I had said that it's in here, but I wasn't sure because we hadn't finalized what the, the exact lease options were gonna be. So we have a few things that I did want to just discuss with understanding now that we've gone over the fund balance. So the amount of money that is currently in the budget is sufficient for what we would need for next year. So we are fine if we went with just a traditional lease. But I have multiple options that I had received from them that would, in my conversations and working through it, will save us a significant amount of interest. So I am suggesting that we go with one of the new options that I've discussed with them for the lease of the buses. And.
How much is our interest rate?
4.9.
As bad as the rest of the world, but.
No, not as bad as the rest of the world, but the.
But still not great.
Well, the original plan that they had put together was going to be the three-year lease that we talked about, but it was three payments of equal amount that were going to be paid, we would start in arrears. So the first year that we would pay would be fiscal '26. And because of that, we would be accruing interest this entire year. So knowing that we had money left over from the van that was in our fund balance, that was allocated to fleet upgrade, I had conversations with them about making a prepayment on the vans using that money, which would save us about $20,000 in interest. So by making that prepayment, it would then reduce, we would still have the same three-year plan, but would reduce our payments almost in half, which, so then what's in the budget is sufficient.
Is there any penalty for paying them off?
There is a penalty for paying it off early and that reduces for every year you go into the lease. But one of the suggestions that I just wanted to put it out to the committee is we have this money available in fund balance. So we, and we have not agreed to any lease options because I wanted to present this tonight. We could put that in there and put it forward for the next three years so that we have the money and we're paying on that lease. But then we also now have built into our budget money for lease if we needed to get any additional transportation vehicles. We, we now have this consistently as money in our budget. Or we save ourselves any interest that we would be having and we use fund balance to purchase these vehicles since the intent is we should not need to purchase them again for 10 years.
What's the savings?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, could you give us a like, not tonight, like a, like a one cheater on like, if we do this, it would cost the district this much, if we do this, it would cost the district this much.
So I have that already done, so I can provide that to you for the leasing portions, but not what we would save overall if we just. So I have that already done, so I can provide that to you for the leasing portions, but not what we would save overall if we just bought them outright. So I can just add that part to it, and then send it out. Um, but I did just wanna confirm to your question that that money is allocated in the budget and what we have is sufficient. So that, there was no change on that. So that was the first item. Um, the second item, and we have, I have Miss Dr. Clark here to talk about it, so we did have some changes, uh, in curriculum that we thought were important to discuss, because it did increase the curriculum budget. And so, I'm gonna put you on the hot spot, my friend.
Um, so, there is an additional cost that was not originally budgeted before, we went to an Open Saiad. Um, originally, we thought the kits that we purchased for the middle school, the new adoption, would last two years. They are not gonna last us the two years, and we need to, um, invest in refurbishing those kits. Um, I'm going to say twenty thousand.
I would like to pretend I remember what those are, but I don't. What are, what are the kids?
Open Saiad is the new science.
Sorry, I'm just saying, like, I was, I was trying to find it in my head, I couldn't do it. Science kits, got it.
The new science kits for grade six, seven, and eight.
So we thought it was gonna be cool, but like, it's, the students use them in their classes.
We thought they were gonna last us two years, that the itemized things, uh, because we bought sections of five, and our teachers only teach sections of four, they're extra, but in the long run, we need to buy replenishment materials, um.
Annually.
Yes, and that's important to know.
Yep, annually. So, um, I, I am putting conservatively twenty thousand, although we might be able to piecemeal it for a, a lower amount, but I just, I won't know until teachers inventory the kits at the end of the year and all that comes in, if we can buy it from a different, you know, itemized things from Amazon and cheaper than the kits, the people that refurbish the kits and send you a whole, the replacement parts, if you will. Um, we had originally taken off some AP pre-calc books, but, um, it is a new curriculum, and they need at least a digital platform, so I am waiting on a quote for just the digital cost. Um, the digital for six years is around fourteen thousand, so I'm looking for a one-year cost on that. Um, other big things, um, when we cut back and did not go with the new curriculum materials for social studies, which was brought up last time, um, which was about a hundred and twenty that we had budgeted, there is a cost to renew the current platform that they're using for another year to get us through, and that's about fifteen thousand.
Versus, how much was the new one?
Hundred and twenty.
And when would they need to be replaced again if we bought them now?
The social studies curriculum?
Like, even if they didn't implement it?
Like, so we have to spend a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for this curriculum, right?
Yep.
When would be the next time you would anticipate having to do something with that?
Every six.
Every six years. So, yep, and then maybe, um, we hadn't gotten down to the, we were looking at two different curriculums, we were gonna pilot this spring, so I would hope with that hundred and twenty, we could buy a multiple, multi-year digital platform, so there wouldn't be reoccurring, so that hopefully would last us for six years. But, there might be a minimal charge for the ongoing digital platform fee, like what we're paying for the fifteen thousand to keep the one that we're currently using.
Other things?
Um, we are waiting to see, there, there, there could be some savings and a few things. Um, there was a, a misshipment of our US history texts that we bought last year, and they ended up sending us replacement shipping, because they, instead of a combined book, they sent separate US history one and two books. Long story short, we may have enough books for every student to have a book in school and take one home. Therefore, we would not need access to the digital ongoing cost, which is twenty-four thousand, so there could be a savings there, but we're inventorying what got sent. So, I, I'm trying to get back to the balance with the additional science kits and the additional social studies curriculum, so there may be some flux, but I, I'm waiting on answers for things.
Do we not let the kids take books home?
Uh, we had not purchased enough for the kids to take home, they were using digital for anything that had to be read at home.
So you.
They were, the original purchase was just for classroom sets, but because the company shipped us the wrong set of books, they sent a whole nother order, and we're parsing through that.
Okay.
This company eventually is, is not gonna have.
You understand my question, right, Ken?
Yeah, can you just clarify, all students have digital access?
All students have digital access, correct.
And we only have, like, some, eh, not the misorder thing, I understand that part, but like, did we not buy enough books? Like, on purpose, because of the digital thing? And why did we buy books at all? Eh, it's more like a fundamental question, not like a specific question.
So we bought enough classroom sets for students to have access during the school day to the textbook.
Yep.
And we bought the digital platform, if they needed to do any additional readings at home, they would have access to the digital platform. This company a- a- is actually doing away with all hard copies, which is why they were so willing to send us what they had left in their warehouse, which is why we now have a surplus of, of books, they're just all different.
Yep.
Some are the compiled US one and US two, some of them are separate. We just have to source through those and see, do we have what we need for every child to have one at home for US history one and two, and in school?
Which could reduce our costs for the digital.
Which, we wouldn't have to buy the digital access, correct.
And we had originally left that in the budget, because we were taking the, the calculus books out.
The AP pre-calc books out, but we do need at least a digital access to that, if not the hard copies.
So the reduction in what we need for AP calc plus the reduction in what we might need for that may even out, but I anticipate that there'll still be an increase to the budget, cause I don't think it's gonna be a dollar for dollar swap out, even though that was what we had originally intended. Um, do you, do preschool, Lexia?
There was a slight change in when the quote came in for the, the preschool curriculum, it was just a, a difference of about, I don't know, six, seven hundred dollars, so that came in a little bit higher. And Lexia, the quote came in higher than expected as well.
About four thousand dollars higher.
Is that a per-user cost, or is it, they just raised their prices cost?
They just raised their prices.
From the first quote that we, I mean, it was, we had a quote, a, a first quote, and then.
Their quotes expire every few months, so you're at their whim until you sign into a contract.
Why didn't we sign into the contract?
Because the budget hasn't been approved.
But.
I have absolutely no issue going back and arguing for the original price, and, and Ken and I talked about this.
To reject.
I, I have no issue going back and.
It's every year.
Fighting to get them to honor the initial quote.
Yeah, it's insane.
Yep.
So is there something she's saying? We have to renew it every year, and we get a cheaper cost prior to the budget. Is that what you're saying? Like, we have to renew it every year, and the earlier you renew it, the better deal you have.
I would say most, most companies, you're not locked into their price until you sign the contract. We don't sign the contract until we know there's approved budget, which means if the con, if the quote expires, we are at their mercy to go back and get another quote within that budget cycle before July first, before we place the order. That frequently happens, where we don't lock in.
Well, and a lot of the places have a respectable timeframe of how long their quote lasts, and, but some of them are just ridiculously short.
Their month, three months, every company is different.
Do districts never pre-allocate money? Like, it's not all disappearing. Like, like, if, you know what I mean? Like, I know that's not a great thing to do for a lot of things, but like, if it's something silly like that, and we know we're gonna use Lexia no matter what, and we're not switching, like, is there a world where we would pre-approve something?
Some of them, you'll see that we've locked into a five-year, because they'll, they'll lock the price as long as we guarantee to go with that product for three years. So we do sign a multi-year contract, although we don't pre-pay it, we're locked in.
It's the same thing. We're like, we're playing with pretend money in that scenario, so why wouldn't we play with pretend money? Like, you know, like, do you, you know what I mean? Like, if that's the situation, it's gonna go up, like, it's something to consider, cause that's wild.
And it, it's certainly something, like you're saying, if we know that it's something that we are not gonna deviate from, we could come to the committee and say, can we lock this in? So no matter what, this number is not changing in our budget.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, yeah, that's exactly what I'm saying. I'm not, I'm not saying for lots of things, but like, there's like two things, and we know that we're not gonna curriculumally deviate from it, that might be worth considering.
So, overall.
Other things that you wanna note on this?
Just, just the overall increase that we're looking at, if we were to do everything and we weren't able to, to swap anything out, is about a fifty-seven thousand dollar increase from what was previously presented last week. So, understanding that curriculum is obviously at the forefront of what we do in education, I have made those changes, and I have added that in at what she was anticipating. So, knowing that there are areas that we have to pare down now to accommodate that, I, I've made those changes because I made the assumption that we're going to need them.
So that number is in, and then you lessened, like, the net, how do we say this? This isn't fifty-seven thousand dollars more, you have adjusted it internally?
So, I, we will be adjusting internally, so, part of the conversation is, what are the areas that we think, before I changed anything else, um, Dr. Clark wanted to make sure that she made all of the changes, we heard back on what was gonna be final, because if anything comes in less than what we had talked about, so I made it in straight, what she said were gonna be the increases, but if we drop to Lexia and we get that back down, or if we don't need what we need for world history, I'm gonna make those adjustments, and then I will adjust out whatever the difference is that we need to do.
Other things that you wanna point out with the budget that we have in front of us versus what we saw last time, anything?
There, I have not made any changes to this document from the last time, because I think there's some discussion items, you know, obviously, we just talked about the bus. I would say the only other thing I would like to talk about would be, um, the items within technology. And knowing, again, we had a significant increase in things that we needed to purchase that were at end of life, I think some of those items, um, the VX rail, some of those things are certainly items that will last us a significant amount of time, and that could be considered, so I'd like to put those forth as part of the fund balance conversation, and remove them from the operating budget, since they're not something that we would need year over year. So, I believe there's three, three of the items within IT that I would like to.
What's in there?
Um, probably about five hundred thousand.
It's the Chromebooks, the VX rail, and the DA server replacement, like, four hundred and seventy-eight thousand five hundred dollars, yeah.
So I would, I would like to pull that out, but I didn't wanna do that again without having the fund balance conversation, but I believe that those are all items that do not need to be in the year-over-year operating budget, but, without knowing the fund balance, we obviously had to include them, there's necessity, we need them. There were some additional items that were also pulled out from the initial conversation, because we didn't have those funds. Again, we'll put those forward for capital discussions, but I would, I would like to pull those, those items from this budget, and I can make that change and then send that out. I think it's a significant amount of money, um, and I think it, it's the rationale behind it to, to use fund balance for that makes sense.
My question is, is can you look to see whether any of that outstanding balance that's been out there for the computer repair can be also, like, drawn down?
Cause we can certainly, we can certainly look at that.
Don't forget, Jen, there's a big list of things he did not report as well.
I know.
He does.
So does Chris.
I know.
Everybody does, everybody does.
That was my next question, what was Chris's?
Chris, Chris has a big list.
Yeah, we know.
Jess has a big list.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm saying it jokingly, but we know that, that what is presented to us is not even reflective of the, the requests that came forward, so.
Correct, absolutely correct.
Including some of the program requests from last year.
No, I know, yeah. With, um, pulling the five hundred dollar, five hundred thousand dollars out, I know some of those are one-time's costs, but some of them are not, and that's where I do get nervous about, like, the Chromebooks and things, like, like, it's one thing to buy a server, and the server's gonna last for however long servers last, but like, the Chromebook thing is, like, a chronic cost. You know, like, it's, like, and so I do get nervous pulling it out of an operating budget, because then, like, the operating budget doesn't reflect, like, what we need. Do you know what I mean?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Those things are different to me, and, and it's not a bad thing, like, if that's what we need to do to get to a balanced budget this year, that's what we need to do, but, like, it's kinda like that practice of, like, transferring money in from your fund balance, like, it's the same thing, eh, but it's an annual cost.
I also wonder why in the past it's never been part of capital, it's part of the capital budget.
Yeah, I said that last week, that doesn't make any sense.
It's just my previous experience, that's where that was, and so that was always a part, separate from the operating, it was part of your capital.
So, like, strategy, like, long-term, we need to think about that, but I think if we do do that, we need to make that very clear when we present to the town, that, like, to balance this, we did X, and like, that, but it's not like that's gonna disappear for ten years, that's not what's gonna happen. It's gonna be back next year, and then it's gonna be back the year after, you know, so I think that's the part that we need to think about.
Capital of how's that capital being funded, and where the funds coming from, that's something that operating or continuing where the town gives a separate capital budget.
Yeah, I mean, at one point, we had an agreement with the town that they were giving us five hundred thousand dollars a year for capital.
And, and that would sustain the, the cost for things like this.
Yep.
So, and, and it, it's two hundred, right now in the budget is two hundred and eighty thousand is for the Chromebooks. So, we can consider taking it all out, we can take a portion of it out, I, I mean, I think.
That's not necessarily what I'm saying, but I'm saying, if we do do this, just making it really clear that we did that, because that, we can't do that every year, like, we shouldn't do that every year.
No, and, and this will be a cost that we will get, because, correct me if I'm wrong, but, you know, every year, there's gonna be a different grade level, a different set.
Yes.
Each grade. Each grades, one, six, and nine every year, that would mean that no matter what, when a child gets a new Chromebook, they've had it for basically four years, so they should never be more than five years old. That's built in, so that way if we do miss a year, it's never more than five.
Yeah, Chromebooks probably have. Chromebooks probably have like a nice three-year.
Yeah, we should have.
Five, five is, five is pushing.
Five is pushing.
Five is pushing.
And I think it's, I mean, I feel like the kids in the middle school and high school use it more than elementary, so, I think it's good to have their six and one.
I, I think it's a perfect conversation.
I mean, the new curriculums in elementary use it a lot, cause it's.
I'm just saying, going right from elementary this year, too.
Did you use it?
Yeah, yeah, there's definitely an increase, but I definitely think we've increased as a district over the, over the past five years of how much we're using different technologies to teach our kids.
And I think curriculum is another one of those long-term item things, like, we know there is like a substantial.
Every six years, yeah.
Every whatever year, it's like.
Do we have a, an outline, like a strategic timeline of curriculum? We tried to laugh.
Yeah, we do.
Do we?
Yeah.
Can we see it?
Sure.
Awesome. No, I'm just thinking about, like, like.
It hides in a policy I've been waiting to be updated for a long time now, so it's part of that policy, but, well, I can give it to you now, no problem.
That'd be great.
Yeah, cause I think to be able to say, like, we are strategically removing these funds, understanding that they're ongoing, but this year because of XYZ, but here's our plan for funding them, you know, year after year.
And, and I think maybe even to kind of, like, as a gateway into, with the town, is say, can we maybe think about capital money even if it's splitting it? Maybe it's not five hundred thousand, it's like, we'll come up with this, if you can provide this every year.
If there's a possibility.
Exactly.
Also, um, wake up something. Jen, what was the thing you just said before?
Curriculum, long-term.
Yes, we put money aside for TURF every year. Wild idea, putting money aside for curriculum.
There, there are certain things that we know we have to have every year, we need to have.
No, like, I mean, like.
No, like, every year, something's up on cycles, like, a hundred and fifty flat.
Yeah, like, there's no, yeah, you're always gonna have that, and so, if we have a surplus, it might be beneficial to the district to think about earmarking some money for whatever curriculum's up at that time, to make sure that we have the funds to be able to stay up to date with, like, that's a huge thing, and it is evolving. You know, like, it's not like the math's gonna be math for twenty years, like, it, you know, they, they keep rolling out new things, and the textbook industry is an industry, so. Just something to think about.
Well, same thing we said last week, Jody, with professional development, we should have, we should have, um, a fun, or, you know, constant for professional de- development s- uh, stored away.
There is some, but a lot of it we can't untangle too.
And, and, and I, I don't know who hit this point earlier, um, so I apologize, but when we were talking about the TURF, and, you know, there's, there's nothing saying that we can't get to a certain amount of money and say, okay, we've saved enough for TURF, at least this committee, and now we wanna take whatever we're allocating each year and put it towards, like, we can say, based on what we think we're gonna need for TURF replacement, the account has enough in it.
Yeah, they wanna say, like, I do think it was smart when they did that, because I do think, if not, we would've got to a place where the TURF was end of life, and we had nothing to do, like, there would be nothing to do.
And it is incredibly expensive.
Yeah, so I think it is very, I don't, I'm not, I'm making jokes about, but like, I do think that that was a very smart thing, because that is gonna be something that, like, once it's done, it's done, kind of vibe. But, I do think we should think about that for, for some of those reoccurring things like technology and curriculum, that, like, you're just gonna always have them, so maybe we can think about what that looks like. Um, other questions regarding the budget?
Chris has a list, too, just so we don't let Chris out of the conversation. Put some money away every time.
Well, we have some, we put some money in the capital, don't we, Jen?
Yeah, we haven't in years, but like.
In theory.
Yes.
Chris, if you don't mind me asking again if I'm stiff, if I'm out of turn, um, the, the few items that we had originally had in the budget that we took out, um, off the top of your head, what they were, these were things that he believed were, like, critical for fiscal twenty-six, that, just to make it known.
Yeah.
Outside of the bond, the, the few, the, I think there were three items, they were all the high school that.
Uh, flooring, flooring at the high school, road replacement in the admin suite, the guidance suite, and the music room, and also the auditorium. Uh, flooring is original to the building and is thoroughly used up.
Yeah, the flooring in the back gym haunts me as well.
Uh, yeah, between the athletic director, yeah, that one too.
Um, trying to highlight student voice, um, the students were advocating and talking about furniture to us at some point, so I don't know if we have a furniture plan.
I don't know, but there's been no mention of that.
Oh, and Democracy Day, there was.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and.
No, I'm just thinking, they were saying, you know, it's, they think, and this may or may not be true, that the furniture's twenty years old and is uncomfortable, and is, a lot of it's, like, right, am I losing?
Yeah, the ergonomics, the ergonomics.
And they're talking about, yeah, they had thoughts. Um, and not say, we just wanted to advocate or say that that's something that we might wanna consider, especially for some of the older buildings, DMS, for example, they have furniture that looks like ex-antique.
Quintessence suggests that look like they're from nineteen twenty-two, so, like.
And, and that was brought up in our.
Tennis balls on a chair drive nuts.
I have brought the last meeting.
Jen's a tennis ball.
Like, or, it's like, just typical stuff that's in the classroom, that's not on the cycle.
Yeah, yeah, so I think that's something to, um, maybe out in this budget, but we need to think about, like, what that might look like, because we're, I think, I would say we're behind, and there's no plan. Like, we were walking around giving that tour, the DMs had dated the parent, but people. Like, we were walking around giving that tour, the DMs had dated the parent, but people were like, oh, is that going to be part of it? And we were like, no, that's not going to be part of it. So I think we do need to come up with some sort of, at least for like, you know, each year a school gets X, kind of vibe, some, something to consider.
Are we talking about, uh, sorry, are we talking about the Davisville Academy move costs now? Can I ask Chris a question?
Yeah, and I was going to, that was going to be one of the things that was going to be one of my, my discussion items. I provided, Chris gave a very detailed overview of what his thoughts were on what the cost would be because I know that came up in the last meeting, which I provided to all of you. It was in the email.
Is it today?
Uh, it was because Chris, he was pleasant, he was nice enough to do it on his day also.
No, we appreciate that. I just wanted to make sure I didn't miss something.
No, it was, it was today. So thank you for doing that and.
So that cost is not in here yet, though?
That cost is not in here unless we look at the fact that our original idea was fifty thousand dollars that's budgeted for this move for this year and the fifty thousand dollars that is in that budget for next year. There's one piece, which was the asphalt work that Dr. Dubin and I talked about. And yes, I agree with Chris that it's something that we should probably consider doing, but it's not necessary for us to do that move. It would be within that hundred thousand dollars that we have. So his estimated cost falls just below for what's the budget.
I thought the extra 20 to 25 asphalt was over, if we decided to do it, it was over.
Yes, it was run 20, but.
We don't do it, bring that ninety-five.
It wasn't required, it was one of those things that wouldn't be required for us to get the program there and actually start, like, it's functioning. But, you know, if we're looking at, should we do it? We should probably do it.
Well, yeah, especially because I don't know how.
But it's not required to do the move, so I kept it separate. That was really just so that you could see.
But I don't know how required the playground is, but obviously, it seems like the playground would be a, an important piece. And to get to the playground, you need to have the asphalt fixed. So I almost think it's more of a requirement than not. Do you know what I'm saying? I mean, that, that was the way I looked at it, read it.
I have to get back behind Davisville Academy again, but I believe we're putting that playground behind the school as opposed to in front of it where the broken asphalt is.
So, so the part.
Accessing that playground from those small people classrooms would not be involving the broken asphalt.
Okay, so then what would be the purp, I mean, besides the fact that it would be helpful to have something that's nicely paved over? What is in that area? I just can't remember it. I haven't been there in a long time.
I think there's just open grass field and a basketball court.
Okay.
But also I've seen some of the students that are at Davisville Academy now do access that front yard. And they stepped out over it and it's.
Yeah, I mean, if we want to do a crystal, it's going to be twenty more, twenty thousand dollars more. We can find that money.
Yes, so, so it was, this is what's required. This is a suggestion and it's probably necessary. So what's in the budget is enough to do the move. Some of the subs, the additional stuff that probably would be a good idea, we would need additional dollars, yes.
Can we, go ahead, Megan.
Oh, sorry, I was just going to say, and that was my just general question, was the money, the hundred thousand, would basically, we would just switch it from, it, it's potentially been allocated one place, but now we're just going to switch it. So we have that money, we have the hundred thousand to move to Davisville Academy.
We have fifty for this year.
Fifty, okay. And then we would have to potentially do fifty plus the extra, 2025.
And we want to do everything on his list.
It would be seventy for this year.
Seventy-five even, yeah. We would, yeah, in fiscal '26 budget, yeah.
Yeah, fifty-seven.
So, yeah, so.
Like upwards of seventy-five.
Um, have we taken into consideration what fishing cove might need to, like, make sure that those classrooms that were vacating are, like, is there any work or things that need to be done to those spaces because they're made for little tiny humans right now?
I have not examined that yet.
Yeah, it might be just something to consider.
The, I, I, in brief conversations with Dr. Santa, there would be things that are currently at DA that would be moving with the students. So, so that part is covered, but obviously, yes, since the area is for small people right now, I'm sure there's some work that would have to be done.
Well, it would be the furniture we'd be looking at. I mean, that's the difference between those classrooms. I mean, there are bathrooms in there that are set for preschoolers, but we would need to be looking at.
I guess what I'm saying is I don't think it's zero. So, like, you know, like, I don't, I don't think it's zero, so we should try to figure out what that might be to make sure that we have it.
Fishing cove cost to prepare?
Yeah, like, like.
Evacuate those.
Right, so instead of, instead of preschool being in there, let's say it's first grade.
Okay.
Yeah, we can certainly add that to the review.
And it might be zero, but I think we should at least look at it and make sure it's zero.
Could be kindergarten.
Right.
If you think about it, you shift the grade, the classrooms. So instead of preschool, it would be K, right? I mean, when you think about.
Yeah. Right.
Moving classrooms and shifting classrooms.
No, yeah, and, and like I said, it could be zero, but just thinking of, like, trying not to get stuck with costs that we weren't anticipating, just make sure that that's.
And those conversations that I had, at least with Dr. Santa, were very high level, so we didn't really dig down into the trenches of that. So we can add that to our review of that.
True.
So I have another question about, for instance, I thought your, your questions that you posed to all of us about what might we need? What else might we need or what we should think about if transferring the preschoolers, I thought that was really well done. Because I, having been over there a ton and my kids all went through the preschool over there, one of the things you mentioned was kind of like the gated area at dismissal time. And obviously, that would be something that would have to be kind of installed over at Davisville Academy. Is that going to be, because I don't believe that was in the, I don't know if you put it in the cost, the estimate?
No, that was just a, do we need it? Because it exists right now in fishing cove, do we need it at Davisville Academy? But we have to look at Davisville Academy and the layout of that building. Is it necessary to do that there or does it already exist? Fishing cove, it was very necessary with regard to the layout of the building and where those kids exit each morning or each afternoon, you know, to be picked up by the parents. So we'd have to examine that. Is it necessary at Davis or does it already exist?
Off the top of your head and not to put you on the spot, is it a, do you think it's a significant cost if we didn't?
I think it's a pretty straightforward fencing.
Okay.
But in the past, when the preschool was there, they used the front door. So they would come out the front where the loop is with the buses and the cars.
And the back even, honestly. So like, that, that new area is fairly new. They tore down the tree and they, like, that's only in the last few years in the front where they dismiss the kids. Yeah, with the gates. It used to be wide open, so it's not a, they used to do otherwise.
They wanted to prevent the little kids from taking off, right? So can we position that at Davisville Academy so there is no place to quote-unquote take off to, to sprint away? But again, we'll set it up.
You had noted too, and I agree with Megan, like, this was super helpful, like, not just what we need, but like, what we need to think about. You had put the need for an enhanced security entrance would be elevated. Where does the security vest deal work for that currently? Like, is that, is that in with the other stuff for 2026?
No.
No, it's the following.
Okay, so that would be something.
Right. And I think that, but I think we can also look at, I mean, really, it's just looking at how the doors are at, when you go into Davisville. Because the hallways are already fobbed.
But the door goes right into the building, right?
It does.
The door does, but you can, we can look at that. I think we can do that in a way that wouldn't be a huge expense.
I imagine the pre-K teachers will have.
And would that stay in the bond or because we need to do it sooner, would that come?
We can look, I think we can have that discussion.
Just to, I mean, you know this, but like at fishing cove, we don't use the vest to be able to pick up pre-K. But we don't pick kids up completely different, but, because like the elementary school's going on and then you're out. Like, it's not the same, so I don't know if it would, I would defer to the teachers and how they would.
I wasn't thinking of pre-K. I was thinking of just like general security.
Just in general. I think you're just saying, because now we're putting more students there, would we now want to secure that? And there's something we talked about of what we can do. There, I think there's different options of how we can do it. It might be a larger, like, when you go in, right, there's a, I want.
No, yeah, no, I guess my point is all the conversations that we've had about DA and like upgrades to it and things that need to be done were based on the administration building to be there. And so like putting students in there opens up some of these other things, security being.
Yeah, there's two areas that we can consider.
Yeah.
Doors.
Kind of piggybacking on that conversation, the separation between the existing students and the potential pre-Ks who are going to be there. Would that be something that you would see, again, as a potential significant expense? If there was, I, I, again, I don't really know the layout of the building very well. I have a friend who works there who said there's a separation. There would be.
There's, there's multiple, I mean, if you think about, there's like multiple separations there.
Okay.
And there's a shift that we're considering, that would be considered of moving, separating programs from one end of the building to the other end of the building as well as moving student services into the middle of the building, so you have.
Yeah.
And there's other, there's another entrance that could be used for the other program.
Okay, but would it entail any sort of additional, like, construction or?
There'll be some, in my opinion, there'll be some very minor adjustments to the badge scanning system that we already have in place. You know, potentially re, you know, inverting a badge or maybe installing some different locks, you know, to allow access.
Each of those halls are already fobbed off, so.
But so minor, just minor.
In retrospect to what we're considering spending, yes, it would.
Okay.
Other questions or things that you want to point out in the budget, Leslie?
I, I don't, unless anyone had any questions about the specific school budgets, because we didn't go through that. But again, I thought it was pretty straightforward, but I didn't have anything with what was presented last week. And then did anyone have any questions? Based on my answers to the questions from the budget review, was there any additional questions or follow-up questions that people had for me with regard to those responses?
I have to be honest, I didn't get to read very thoroughly, just so you know.
That's okay.
Yeah, but I didn't get a chance to like go through them.
I know, I'm sorry.
I did have a couple of questions, like, just tying back to things we talked about last week that were different. Where is the rental income from the facilities shown? Like, there's a line for 15% capital reserve, but where's the actual?
Revenue?
Revenue.
The actual revenue, so.
In theory, there should be two different lines. One would be for custodial and one would be for the building. Because like poor profits pay for the facility, but not profits don't, and then, but everybody pays for custodial.
I, can I get back to you on how I have that rolled up? Because I don't want to tell you the wrong thing, but.
Yep, absolutely. When are the, I think you told me this, but I forgot, when are the benefit increases finalized?
May.
May, okay, that's what I thought you said. Or I knew it was like after the.
Late.
I have many questions on the stipends, but I'm going to save those. But one question I had that we have broken out on the salary benefits is the COT, the CODIS?
Yes.
So I just putting this out there, is there a reason why we have those as employees and not as contracted services?
I am going to defer.
Is the CODIS?
Yes.
Is. They're not contracted. Yeah, they're a separate agency and they are hired employees.
No, there, there are employees that they're, they're separated out on this document just because they're not part of any of the collecting, collective bargaining agreements. So they serve their own bucket.
They have their own separate policy.
Yeah, well, that's why I asked.
But they're still salary and are employees.
It seems like a lot of the other things in that area are contracted services versus employees. So I'm just wondering, like, we ran that quick like scenario in terms of cost benefit. Like, is there a cost benefit to outsourcing those versus having those employees? Just putting that out there for my thoughts, sorry to any CODIs listening to me.
And just, different districts do it different ways. Some have them as part of their union, some have them separate, some do have them as contracted services. So I'm certainly looking.
Yeah, just, just out of curiosity, we already talked about the sums. The professional services for HR is a $10,000 expense. What is that?
Yes, so we have, that is going, it's new in 2025. I, we were paying for it this year. It was less expensive, but we're anticipating it to increase next year, so it's on there. So we have contracted services now for our 1095 ACH requirement that we do. That process proved to be very complicated last year. And to make sure that we are accurate and that everything is going the way it needs to be, we're using a ser, we're utilizing a service now to provide that.
Okay.
So for the first year, we were able to get a little bit of a discount on that, but I'm anticipating it's probably going to be over $10,000 next year. But I want to make sure that it's budgeted for.
Okay. Speaking of professional development, it looks, I noticed we reduced our budget this year for that. 2025 was 23,000, 2026 is 14,000. Was there a reason for that?
Some of it might just be in different places.
Reality.
I think some of it is reallocated because we did hold that budget flat.
Oh, I think supplies and materials. Okay, I see. Yeah, they moved there, okay.
Just more accurate.
Yeah, and, and, and things were applied to different lines, like, we're paying it out, so we've moved it so that we can be consistent. We can track it and really understand where the money is going.
Going back to the increase that we talked about, things that we saw an increase in were because we didn't need or we use less of like psychologists and contracted services and things like that. We currently have a budget based on personal care attendance and orientation mobility services. Like, is that based on our current enrollment?
Yes. So Dr. Santa and I went through each of those and we really looked at what we had, what was spent in the prior year, where we are currently, what we're anticipating for next year, and we adjusted the budgets based on what she anticipates that need being.
Based on like who's graduating and.
Correct, correct, yes.
I have another question. Maybe I completely missed something or maybe we're going to discuss it at another time, which seems odd to me. All of those personnel positions, the kind of priority list, the request, when are we going to be talking about those?
That was going to be my, my last item. Oh, okay, we can talk about it whenever you want. So obviously, there is a need. We really need to go through and we need to look at those items. There are additional costs that come with some of those requests too that I think need to be considered. I mean, if we're adding kindergarten classroom, we have to add kindergarten curriculum. So, or if it's a totally new classroom, we need furniture, we know all these things. So it's not just the positions, but I think we need to, we need to talk about the positions first. Right now, we're already over budget without even talking about those positions. So I think we needed to have the conversation of what are things that we can start? What was our initial thought of what can we pull out, what, you know, and we've had that conversation now. But I do think it's important to say, you know, where do we think the priorities are? I am, I will be honest, I am your finance person. I can look at the dollars and tell you what I think makes sense, but from a, you know.
Well, that's where Ken.
Exactly, like, that's.
And let us know what, what your strategic priorities are from, from that list. And not right now, but like, like Leslie presented, this is what's not in, and so I, I think that's where we.
Well, I think you have to look at what is necessary, right? Of what was requested by principals and our director of student services. Also going through the projections and working on possibly redistricting plan and seeing with the shift of neighborhoods and where students are going, how that's going to impact the number of classrooms we need in each school. So that's something that I'm doing, actually tomorrow, the project I'll be working on with Joanne, who does our registry. She was moving everywhere. So we need to sit down and go through that and see, can I get it to be where with this move, is there situations where we don't need as many classrooms so those positions can switch to a position?
Do we have retirees already factored in?
So.
Because I know we don't have, they, the weird window's not windowing yet.
Right. So in, in some part, I do, I have a very small, we, we've kind of talked about the whole breakage thing. So I, I do have them factored in to an extent, but not because there is nothing solidified. I mean, the numbers I've gotten ranged from four to thirteen.
Yeah.
So to me, that, that's not a solid enough number to go in.
When does that lock? It's not till like March 8th or something?
It, it really just depends on the individual, honestly, but.
But isn't there like a thing?
April, right?
Yeah, there's like, you can go to the people.
You can offer incentive to get them to do it.
Right, you, you can, if they do it by a certain time, they can have this, but I mean, I think someone can go up until the day before.
They can go to the day before.
The day before and say, I'm retiring tomorrow, so that, it can absolutely happen. So there's a, there's a big flux with that. So one of the things, like, within the salary, like, I don't really have breakage factored in because of that, because I don't have a solid number. So I don't feel comfortable saying we're going to have five retirees and they're all going to come in at a step two.
So the answer is no. It's, but that's not a bad thing. It gives you a little buffer.
No, that's, no, it is, it is not factored in there.
Because even if you get one, it's unlikely that you would hire them at the same grade as, so.
Well, and, and well, right now, with the way the current hiring pool is, like, we have a step 10 retire. A lot of times they're getting replaced with a seven, eight, or nine.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. So like, it's not factored in, but there could be some personnel savings once it is factored in, but like, it's not even worth guessing.
But the budget, like, what I did see, right, you, you had a few in there and they were based on replacing with a step two.
So if, if we were to factor it in, it would be replaced with a step two, but I have zero breakage factored in. So because that's kind of the standard, that standard does not work. So I, I don't feel comfortable factoring in the breakage because the likelihood of us being able to replace a 10 with a two is very slim. Now, what I can do is with that, you know, that, the sheet that I have and with my worksheet, I can change that from a step two to a step eight and factor our breakage on a 10 retiring being replaced with an eight and then take that breakage number. So obviously, you're not going to have as much. Can certainly do that. I can change that level, but I don't feel comfortable factoring it in. It's just too, too much of a flex.
Yeah. Can we, we have 10 minutes left. Can we review the timeline? Because I want to, like, we've obviously been, we've done some really good work so far. And like, Leslie, obviously, you've done a tremendous amount of work. We've had lots of workshops and meetings, but I want to make sure. Like, Leslie, obviously, you've done a tremendous amount of work. We've had lots of workshops and meetings, but I wanna make sure that we're all clear on where we're going so that we don't get to a place where we're like, oh, my gosh, like, we have to vote tonight, you know, like, so can we look at that quickly?
Just go back and retire it. It's like it go first.
I knew there was a date.
Can I just ask one more specific question? We talked about using money from the athletic gate receipts.
That's second one.
April was, April was in my brain as well.
There's forty thousand dollars of uniforms at the high school and the middle school. Can we pull that out and use that from the gate receipts? Did you look into whether we could?
So for, I did reach out, I did get information, and it is not recommended because that is something that has to be, that you are required most of the time to purchase every year because those uniforms are the, most of it is football helmets. And so because that is required, if you're using gate receipts, you you're taking it out of the operational budget and using something that you can't guarantee you're gonna have money in.
But we could do it for one year, correct?
What could we do with stuff that's not like that?
Not great.
But could, not great, but could.
There's seventy thousand dollars or whatever sitting in that fund, like it it that is a chunk of money that can come out of this budget.
So things that we that we could probably use it on are, like, there are very specific uniforms and things that were requested for the middle school that are not year over year over year. They haven't been requested in a while. We're replacing a lot of things. That would probably be a good purchase that we could pull out. It's not a tremendous amount of money, but we could do that. Not ideal, but we can.
Okay, so can we quickly go over timeline and then we will um, obviously have this on the agenda for for next Tuesday, maybe?
So we have to have it submitted to the town by February twenty-fourth.
So we have two meetings left.
So I would like to have all of the changes that we've talked about tonight updated, and I can send that out prior to the meeting, so you have, and if there's any questions or discussion items that that can be answered before. So that the next meeting, which is next Tuesday, next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday.
Um, we can certainly, you know, have information in terms of the positions and have all of that prepared. And then um, a plan, I I mean, I hope I'm not being too ambitious in speaking for you, but have have the capital plan too, because there are certain items that we know we've already talked about.
We have one meeting, that's it.
Yeah, but that's it.
Yeah, we don't have a meeting on the eighteen.
Hold on, I'm gonna be busy.
No, yeah, that's actually, that's like, that's what I knew that, I could feel it. Uh, okay, great.
There's no way we're gonna get this done approved in next week, so let's just name that now so that we can be proactive about doing something about it.
I'll talk to Ken.
So can I, can I just ask a question about this, just so that I understand as we're talking about what we wanna do? Do you want me to have thi- would you prefer to have things next week as well as if we have to have an additional meeting? Or do you wanna pick what that additional time would be if it has to be another meeting and just wait and do everything at that?
Oh, no, we're doing it next week.
I just wanna make sure that you want multiple
No, like ideally, we would work through some things because we would hear from the administration about like additional things that might need to be put in that are in. We should, would work through some things that maybe we can take out of the operating budget, but still get. Um, and then ideally, like the last time you see it, there's no conversation, like it's, this is the final approval kind of energy.
I I honestly, I think we could do that.
Anything else? We have five minutes left, six technically.
So are we saying right now that we're going to review, change, and approve on the eleventh?
I find that to be very
I do too, and that's what I'm saying.
Oh, I thought it was, I would have everything that we need so that we can do a full review on the eleventh and then
We don't have another meeting scheduled after the eleventh.
I keep thinking there's a meeting on the eighteenth.
We can't talk about that right now, though, so it's no
No, no, but I'm just putting it out
I apologize, I keep thinking there's a meeting on the eighteenth, okay.
Yeah, and I said, I'll talk to Ken about like what we need to do or not need to do or what we can do, but um and like if the town has any flexibility, like, you know, like, we'll see. I I'm sure they don't, but no, what we do need to do is some significant work on Tuesday still. So is there anything other than the things that we talked about today that we are hoping to hear from the administration on on Tuesday?
Just some of the outstanding questions around like mental health physicians and buses and things like that, like some of the, you know, wrapping up the other questions so that we can kind of look at it in a whole.
And those are questions that I felt were kind of outside my purview. I didn't wanna respond to them, so I've reached out to the applicable people so that we can have those conversations. So just know that it's in purpose.
I don't know if, and I got, I didn't get to look at anything today because I was at my job, um, but um, which is fine, but um, if it's already in there, apologies. More information about the impact of moving the pre-K, I I'm really concerned about long term, like with like what we can do as far as how many students we could eventually accommodate, et cetera. And so can we get more information, Ken, about like that plan? Like, I wanna make sure that we're
So to do a universal pre-K or just that we are able, if if we have students that are coming in with disabilities that require preschool programming, that we have space in the building? Or to do a universal pre-K?
Maybe somewhere in between. Um, I was disappointed that we have reduced the amount of peer classmates or what, there's a name for them.
Right, we did that to, right, we reduced the number, the number of typical peers because of the need of
Yes, which is very important.
Students with disabilities.
But also, all the data and all the research shows that having strong pre-K programs helps us long term as a district because students that get pre-K education do better in life. And so, one, I think eventually the the state, I've said this before, the state will mandate it, but also I wanna just make sure
We have the space in that, when we go there, we have the space in that building. It would be a budget, it would be budgetary to hire more staff.
I don't think I've even seen that. I don't know how many, like, we haven't really seen a full pre-K plan, I guess is what I'm saying. Because I wanna, I feel like I'm approving it a lot for like, like, not really, but like, you know what I mean, like, I just wanna make sure that we're making a good long-term decision.
Well, right now, we're, we're, right now, the plan is just to move and continue at five class, five classes. Right, that's the plan for next year.
Yes, no, I understand that.
Put a plan together, we'll not be able to have that plan for next week because there's a lot of other budgetary things we need to do for Tuesday.
I didn't, I mean, I've asked previously too, like, this is the first time I've asked for this.
But I think right now, we keep focusing on the budget. I think right now, like, our our
I'm I'm not to not do it this year, I guess is what I'm trying to say, like, I don't think, I don't, I don't know if this is the best financial decision this year to do. And so I'm trying to get to a yes for the pre-K, transparently. So I feel like I need like a little bit of information to make that a yes in my brain, and maybe
So what information do you want? What I'm hearing is you want information of can be expanded preschool in the future?
Yes.
And you wanna know that in order to say that yes, we'll move the current programming, we're looking at
This is a good investment.
To move them over to Davisville.
And maybe like long term, I don't know if Erin, this is what you're saying, but like long term, if the program continues to expand, which we probably hope it would and it probably will. What is the capacity? So kind of like with Wickford Middle School, if we build a new middle school, what would be our max capacity in case, you know, people start coming back to the district, enrollment starts to grow. So, I mean, maybe something as simple as that, like first, like what's our max capacity in in terms of enrollment?
Like, I know you all have it, but like, I can't even picture where you're putting it in the building. Like, not everybody's even seen DA. Like, you know, like, it's just, and I get it, like, I know you're really excited about it. I know you think it's the right thing, but like, I just feel like I need a little bit more information to know that it's a good financial decision long term. I'm not looking for like a massive thing, but maybe just something.
Well, because could we even add another classroom at Fishing Cove if we wanted to? I feel like it's like, I feel like we're maxed at the elementary schools.
Right, that's why we do
That's why preschool needs a new spot.
There's no space at Fishing Cove to add anymore. That's why we wanna use the empty spaces at Davisville for the programming.
But we're not adding anything.
We're not adding anything for next year, no, because right now, we're just looking at maintaining what we have, we can add in the future, but we're definitely not adding anything for next year.
I I think for me too, what would be helpful is like you're, like, you're saying we're capped at Fishing Cove, right? But like, where are the numbers that show that and like how?
That we're capped, we have no classrooms to put, we have no, we have no open classroom spaces to add another classroom at Fishing Cove.
Right, but how, like, I, what I'm saying is that there isn't even anything being presented that says like we're at our maximum level at enrollment there, you know what I mean? Like, so for me to see the whole, like, why can't we go for, why can't we continue the way we are? Like, show me something that says why, why we need to free up space there. Like, is it part of the whole redistricting plan?
That's, that's what we're looking at doing is part of the conversations we're having at the redistricting committee is that opening space, right? So if we want to move classrooms and move, you know, move students down, if we open up space, then we can move more students down into that building to lessen the number of students that are
And and I think having that presented, instead of just saying we wanna move the preschool and do this
I think the problem is the timeline, like, we have another redist- we have another redistricting meeting on the twenty-fifth to kind of go forward with what we're presenting to go to them. Then that would come to school committee after that.
Which is why this feels a little, it it, this is a little premature to them, a greater plan, is how I'm feeling.
I think something that also might be helpful is if you could maybe show us the enrollment and maybe the waitlist. Like, how many students are having to be turned away?
From the preschool or from?
From, from Fishing Cove, because I do know there, there's always like a lottery, a waitlist and that, and I mean, it's become more and more popular as the years go on. So if you could just even give us like the last two years of like how many kids had to get waitlisted? And and maybe how many students, like how many less peers we, uh, what did you call them, like typical peers? Uh, versus, you know, this year, maybe we had less typical peers, so just some sort of comparison numbers and and like I said, for the, for new Davisville Academy, what, how many more students could we include in the preschool if we do move there compared to where we are now? Long term, not necessarily just, not so different, no. No, 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 like, like the fighter plan, right, the long-term plan, strategic plan.
All right, data one, uh, can I get a motion to adjourn? Is it moved?
Second.
Okay, those are favored.
Aye.
Thank you.